Good evening, and welcome to the Monday, April 8th City Council Regular Meeting. I'd like to call this meeting to order and ask our city clerk to conduct a roll call, please.
Councilmember Wilkinson.
Present.
Councilmember Cooper.
Here.
Mayor Mark.
Present.
Councilmember Chemnitzer.
Present.
For the record, Councilmember Lynch is absent.
Thank you. Moving on to our reports and presentations, we'll start with our City Council reports. Do any City Council members have reports to issue? Councilmember Cooper.
Yes, I would just like to let everyone know that there's a youth town hall on April 28th put on by the County and Marin Office of Education, and it's a Q and A session to for City Representative, City Council representatives to come and meet with high school students that are interested in city policy. So I will be representing us on April 28th. If you know any high school students that might be interested, I'll have the flyer in the back. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to items. You don't need a public comment on that, do we? Do we need a public comment on the? I'll open the, sorry, the City Council reports to a public comment. Seeing none here. Madam Clerk, anybody online?
Mayor Mark, I see none.
Thank you. Item 3B is our City Manager report. I'll turn this over to City Manager Robert Zadnich.
Thank you, Mayor Mark. Do you have a, well, I recognize you do have a few other presenters waiting, so I'll keep my comments brief tonight. First, I did want to highlight that the City Council held its annual retreat on March 27th. Councilmembers and members of the Planning Commission attended this session, and they brainstormed on topics ranging from prioritizing repair of our city's infrastructure to implementing ADU programs and improving how contractors and residents access city services. This, I think, really is the one time of year that we can all come together and have an informal conversation, so I want to say thank you, and thank you to the Planning Commission as well for attending and helping us with some of our marching orders. Switching over to personnel, briefly, I wanted to mention that Belvedere selected its new Public Works Supervisor. I'm pleased to announce that the selection panel unanimously recommended that our very own Alberto Carranza be promoted into this resident-facing role. Over the last year, Alberto has proven his aptitude and ability by stepping up into this role and supervising during Gerhart's absence. Alberto comes with years of experience working for the city of Belvedere, and prior to that, he was in the trades. He's a perfect fit for the job, and I've got a lot of confidence that he'll be an invaluable addition to our leadership team. We will be featuring him briefly in this Friday's newsletter. I'm sure we'll be seeing more of him around town, so if you do see him, please take him over and congratulate him on the promotion. And then finally, I'd make to, I'd like to make everyone aware that the city has opened up its summer internship program, and it's currently accepting applications. For a number of years, Belvedere has offered this opportunity to college students interested in learning more about how local government operates. This is a great chance for a student to get real-world experience before transitioning into the job sector. Through the internship, students gain a full understanding of the inner workings of the city and also have an opportunity to assist staff and council members on several key projects and initiatives that need to be advanced. If you know someone who would be a good fit, please encourage them to apply. The flyer has been posted on the city's website and various recruitment platforms. The deadline to apply is May 10th. That's all I have for now, unless there's questions.
Thank you. Be sure to give over to our congratulations.
Will do.
Questions for our City Manager? I'll open that up to a fellow comment.
I see none.
Well, now I'll go to a presentation from Larry Brinkley, member of the Marin County Commission on Aging. Sorry, I didn't have my mic on. Was I able to be heard? I'll speak up from now on, I apologize. This is, this is a presentation by Larry Brinkley, member of the Marin County Commission on Aging. I apologize.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you, Mayor Mark, and members of the council. I have three brief items I just wanted to present concerning the Marin County Council on Aging and Age-Friendly Belvedere. I'll start with a quick overview of the Marin County Older Adults Needs Assessment. Near the end of last year, Davis Research was contracted by Marin Health and Human Services to conduct the survey of Marin residents over 60. This assessment is conducted every four years, and it's an important opportunity to track and evaluate the needs of older adults in Marin. The information in the needs assessment will shape the plans of the county's Area Agency for Aging for the next four years, and will help direct appropriate funds to those programs and services. Here are just a few of the findings from the assessment. Since our last assessment in 2019, our over-60 population in Marin has increased to 30% compared to approximately 20% in greater California, and it will increase to almost 40% in the next 10 years. Food insecurity has risen from 10% to 18%, practically doubled in the last four years. The category of financial security saw the largest increase from 13% in 2019 to 29% now. Those with fixed incomes are having difficulty making ends meet, with almost half of them saying it's hard to live on their current income. Housing, as we all know, is an issue, but here in Belvedere, we have more circumstances of house-rich, income-poor, and living alone in large homes because there's nowhere to go to downsize and stay in our community. And for those who are housebound due to age and disability, feelings of isolation and loneliness have increased over the last four years. One-third of older adults in Marin are socially isolated. As your commissioner, my purpose is to focus on these categories in our community and help find ways to connect these people to available resources, bring my community findings to you, the council, and the commission, and finally, as is our federal mandate, to advocate with the County Board of Supervisors. My second item concerns age-friendly Belvedere. One good way for commissioners and everyone else, for that matter, to connect with our community is through age-friendly Belvedere. In my last report to this council, I said I was assuming temporary responsibility for age-friendly from Nancy Chemnitzer. I said I saw great value in merging age-friendly Belvedere with Tiburon because we share a lot. Today, I'm happy to report that I'm still working with Tiburon Commissioner Jane Gould, and we're moving forward with unanimous support from the Marin Age-Friendly Network and our California Advocacy Director Rafi Nazarian's, who's our liaison for age-friendly communities. The application process will be greatly simplified since Tiburon will join the network by sharing Belvedere's Community Action Plan and simply submitting a membership application and their letter of intention. And finally, I have an example of that cooperation in action. A Belvedere and Tiburon Shared Event. The event title is Senior Expo: Resources to Enrich Your Life in Tiburon and Belvedere. This is a first-time event, and it highlights local community services and, oh, that are available to over-60s, and will include vendors, demonstrations, and giveaways. The expo will take place in the Founder's Room in the gallery at the Belvedere-Tiburon Library from, oh, on April 26th from 10 until 2:00. Jessica Hotchkiss, the Ranch Recreational Director, and Crystal Durant, our Library Director, are spearheading this expo, and our Commission on Aging and Age-Friendly are joining in support and will have a prominent presence there. I would like to invite you, our council, to attend and join in a dialogue with this important and growing segment of our community. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Do we have any questions for Mr. Brinkley?
I just want to thank you so much for your service, and there was a short report that represents a huge amount of work on the back end, and we learned during COVID that approximately, and the last census, that approximately half of Belvedere resident homes have a senior in the house, at least one or one person 60 or older. And so the work that Larry does is, is very relevant to all of our residents, and I'm deeply grateful. Thank you.
Sure.
I had one question. I've been fortunate enough to get some information from other communities as well, Ross, and I think it was Fairfax, and some of them actually have, like, once a month, they'll have a senior coffee just to get people together, and it's, it's free for them to come, and I don't know if, or if there's a budget or anything like that that you're in charge of, but I didn't know if that was something that you might just think about or consider to see if you thought it would be worth it for Belvedere to look into something like that. So it's just a question and suggestion at the same time.
I think suggestions. I'm totally open for suggestions, and it's a great idea. I'm going to be doing a lot of that just to try to bring people together and, you know, get some participation, and there are congregate meals now, but they actually aren't really well-attended. I think part of it's the name. I mean, what's a congregate meal? You know, it's, but anyhow, yes, the answer is yes. I think it's a great idea, and I'll put that on my list.
Yeah, I mean, I know you're working. I, I heard Jane Gould when she did her presentation in Tiburon, and she had some information that I know you do as well that was very surprising about Uber and giving discounts, and so I know there's a lot of information we could be sharing.
We'll have all that. We'll have that.
That's all at the expo.
At the expo.
Okay, great.
Right. Come to the expo.
I plan on. I'm, I'm in the category. I'll be there.
Me too. Thank you.
Thank you so much. No, no, absolutely, thank you so much, and I appreciate your comment about how, giving a real-world example of how Tiburon and Belvedere are working together moving forward. Thank you. Any additional public comments on Mr. Brinkley's presentation? Seeing none? Anybody online?
Mayor Mark, I see none.
Thank you. Moving on, thank you very much. Moving on to item 3D, a presentation by Peyton Stein related to Concerts in the Park.
Well, here we are again. 27th year. Do I look older? I'd like very much to thank you for considering giving us $5,000 to help us, and I know it sounds like a lot of money, but as everything else, I think costs have gone up, and we have to hire people, and we have to, we have to get the stage, and the canopy, and the bands, and the sound people, and so this money makes it absolutely possible. Without it, we, I'm not sure what we would do. Maybe it would be a really quiet concert. I don't really know. So just thank you for that, and we're looking forward to a great year. Does anybody have any questions?
Pete, what's, what's your full budget amount? Meaning, how much are we funding of the full budget?
Well, our budget is about $10,000 a concert, so that's $40,000, so. But we have other major donors, and we have money that comes in from the community as well.
That's a surprisingly large number, so you're asking for a very small share?
Yeah, it is. Well, we, we've considered asking you for a little bit more, but we thought, you know, let's just keep it like this for at least another year, but we'll probably be back at a higher level next year.
Okay. Thank you.
So, thank you. I'm looking forward to seeing all of you at the concert.
Thank you so much. Any further comments from the public here? Seeing none? Once again, anything online?
I see none.
Thank you. That item will be discussed later in the agenda by the council. Item 3E, a presentation by Adam Gavner, Chair of Block Captains.
Good evening, Mayor Mark and council members. I am here this evening to propose and to offer my services to produce a city-sponsored event called Belvedere Community Picnic in the Park, and it comes following last year's Emergency Preparedness Day where the block captains hosted various emergency response setups in the park. And the idea this year was to expand upon that idea, to bring in other elements such as having an area where various organizations, city groups, committees could present their needs for volunteerism. So it'd kind of be a, a place where you can put all of that out and hopefully recruit some volunteers. We have several different groups that would be involved or will be invited. Let's see. First off, it's happening on June 15th between 12 and 2:00 p.m., and I chose that date. It's designed to try to encourage people to stay home that weekend. There's a lot going on. There's Friday nights on Main, there's Juneteenth, there's concerts, opening day the following Sunday. So I thought that would be a good weekend to try to keep people in town, and the idea is to both provide emergency preparedness information, which would be presented by block captains, also a chance to meet your first responders on, in a casual setting. So the police will be there. Chief Wu has talked about being available to talk about go-bags and stay-bags, which is something that we haven't put much attention on, because ideally, people are going to first shelter in place, so we want to make sure that people understand that they need to have a home bag. As I mentioned, the volunteers booth, I would invite the city and staff members, whoever's available, to show up and just be available for community members to talk about issues that they may have. I've already worked out with the Tiburon Fire Department that they will once again be serving the burgers and hot dogs from the barbecue that they'll set up. I already have an approved grant from the BCF to provide for all of the food and drinks. I am proposing that I hire a bouncy house for the kids to have something to do. As I said, the block captains will be hosting emergency preparedness stuff. Dr. Cromwell will be onsite teaching lifesaving techniques such as CPR, Stop the Bleed, and Narcan Administration. I would invite the Parks and Open Space Committee members to provide a booth, provide them a booth so they can talk about the work that they're doing. I'm going to invite the Diversity and Inclusion Task Force to show up, and I believe they might be able to then encourage people to come out to Juneteenth, which would happen just a few hours later. BCF will plan to be there, talking about the work that they do for our community, and hand out the gas shut-off wrenches that they've already provided to the block captain program. I'm inviting the ranch, I'm inviting the library, I'm inviting Vivilon, I'm inviting age-friendly Belvedere, and open to any other groups that might want to take part. I am asking for a not-to-exceed grant of up to $1,500, and this would only be used against actual expenses, hopefully a lot less than that. I already have the grant from BCF. I would ask for Mayor Mark to you, for you to assign a council member that could be working with me on this, because it truly is a city-sponsored event. I would ask that there be notification in the Belvedere Breeze to help me promote it, and I would ask that something get posted as an event on the city website, and that ends my presentation. If you have any questions.
Thank you. Do we have questions for Adam Gavner?
I just wanted to ask about the police go-and-stay bags. Are they actually giving out bags or just like lists?
No, it would be just a list and talking about the importance of them.
Okay, great. Thanks.
Mayor Mark, I just wanted to, I think it's an absolutely fantastic idea. I like the idea of expanding the emergency preparedness offerings to include an expanded discussion of volunteering. On the one hand, these committees recruit, but on the other hand, people, residents often ask me, what can I do? So I, I think it's a great way to bring those together. The statistics show that, that one of the, or the experience of other first responders shows that a way to make communities safe is to support the social infrastructure, and so I'm happy to help if that's the mayor's preference.
Sounds great. Any other thoughts? Questions for Adam? Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Any other further comment on this item? Seeing none, I'll ask online again.
I see none.
Thank you, and Councilmember Commissar, thank you for offering to volunteer. Before we move on, do we have any other ideas or thoughts, or would we take Councilmember Commissar up on her volunteering to work with Adam on this project?
Always accept a volunteer.
I agree entirely, and I think it's great that it ties in with our need to recruit for all of the committees that are turning over in June, so I think the, the timing is great as well.
Wonderful. Thank you. So assigned. Moving on to item four, I believe the, Robert, will you take this? The Declaration of the Election Results?
Our city clerk's going to go through the results.
Okay, thank you. Madam Clerk?
Mayor Mark and council members, Elections Code Section 10263 requires that the City Council adopt their resolution reciting the facts of Measure C, the Fire and Emergency Medical Services Appropriations Limit Adjustment. The Marin County Register of Voters has reported the following with respect to the March 5th, 2024 election. 893 whole votes were cast in the city of Belvedere. 870 votes were cast with respect to Measure C. 679 votes in favor, 191 voted against. Because Measure C required majority vote approval, Measure C has been approved. Before you, as a resolution, reciting these facts for your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions or discussion before we ask for a motion on this resolution? Seeing none. Before the motion, I'd just like to thank the citizen-led committee, Jenna Watson and her committee, who did a spectacular job informing the community about the need for this measure and successfully passed it at a number very consistent with its passage in the past. So could I please ask for a motion to adopt this resolution?
I move that we adopt the resolution with certification of the election results. Set forth in Exhibit A and the materials before us tonight.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Unanimously. Do you need a roll call for that? Oh, I apologize. Public comment on the certification of the election results? Seeing none here?
I see none.
Okay. Do we need to do the resolution, do the nomination again? Sorry, the, the, okay. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
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 That was unanimous, and no opposed. Moving on to the consent calendar. Consent calendar consists of items the City Council considers to be routine. Unless any item is specifically removed by a member of the City Council or has a question from the audience, the consent calendar will be called and voted on as a whole. Do any council members have a question or, or, or a, would like to remove a particular item?
I just have a point of clarification. I noticed that item 7A is titled Consent, and could we just clarify before we vote on the consent calendar that, that that's just a clerical error and that is not part of the consent calendar tonight?
It's on the page heading.
It's simply on the.
Above the date.
It's simply on the page heading.
Stat report, yeah.
Thank you.
It is not, it is not a consent item. Thank you for clarifying that.
Thank you. Can I ask if there's a, sorry?
No.
No. Ask if the, anyone from the public has a comment or a desire to remove something from the consent calendar? Seeing none in the room? Anyone online?
Mayor Mark, I see none.
Thank you. So can I entertain a motion for item five, the Consent Calendar, 5A, B, C, D, E, and F?
I so, I so move, noting that I will abstain from 5E as I was not present at that meeting.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Moving on to item six. Thank you very much. Public hearing, introduce the first reading of an ordinance of the city of Belvedere to discontinue the Mills Act program, and I believe we have a staff report.
Good evening, Mayor Mark and council members. In July of 2023, the City Council received a report from staff about the city's Mills Act program. The report summarized that due to staffing challenges, Belvedere's current approach to the Mills Act does not require property owners to provide active plans or proof of satisfactory restoration, nor does the city have a fully-developed inspection or monitoring program. As a result, the city cannot guarantee that money saved on property taxes goes toward a property's rehabilitation. After deliberating on the issue, the council requested that staff return at a later date with potential modifications to standards and policies related to future Mills Act agreements, as well as an analysis of the merits of discontinuing the program. The council also asked staff for guidance on the treatment of existing Mills Act program participants should the program be discontinued. On March 11th, 2024, the council considered modifications to the Mills Act program and whether the program should be discontinued. After deliberations and providing opportunity for public comment and feedback, the council decided to discontinue the Mills Act program. The reasons for the discontinuance was primarily that the Mills Act was not achieving its purpose as designed. Due to staff turnover, the program being administrative, being administratively difficult, the lack of supervision of the program, and the possibility that tax savings are not being used appropriately, the council directed staff to discontinue the Mills Act. During the deliberations, the council also discussed the Mills Act does not affect the city's historic preservation's efforts and encouraged residents to continue to apply for historic designation under Chapter 21. Tonight, staff is recommending the council move to approve the first reading of the ordinance, which will discontinue the Mills Act, and I'm available for questions should you have any.
Thank you very much. Do we have questions for Rebecca? We don't?
I guess, I don't know if I have questions about what she was reporting, but, okay, one question would be, when, once the Mills Act is ended, have we made a decision about how it would end? Is that part of tonight? In other words, if we ended it effectively tonight, do we know how all these are going to proceed to the current recipients or contract holders?
Sure. Included in the council packet is a letter of non-renewal, and we would start that process this week of reviewing each property and sending that letter of non-renewal out, and the code won't be effective until a second reading and then 30 days after that. So it's two tracks. It would be 10 years, sorry, 10 years for each property. Thank you.
Okay. So when I, when I was reading the state legislation, government code on this, it, it pretty much makes a point of saying that the program itself is 10 years, and And then if you choose to add on after that, you could continue to offer additional years. And there are other caveats about visiting the property every five years. And all the things that we said are difficult for our small community to follow through on. They also seem to have made it pretty clear that each community has their own way of doing things. The only thing I could find that was sort of absolute in the whole legislation and ordinances were that it be ten years. So I guess my question is, if someone is in their third year, say, what I'm trying to, what I'm trying to propose is that perhaps we could look at having the people that are currently in the program and finish up their first five years. Anyone who's in it now, finish the five years and then give them five more years of the discounted rate for a total of ten years, which seems to be the only directive in the ordinance is a total of ten years. So I didn't know if that was anything that you had thought of or anything that's been done maybe elsewhere, or if that was something that we could think about.
I think we're saying the same thing, that if it is discontinued, we will send a letter of non-renewal out, perhaps this week, and it would be ten years from the date of their contract.
Do you want me to jump in there, though? Because there's a, the State Board of Equalization has very strict rules in terms of how that tenure taper works. You can't, you have to go onto their rules and it gives you a very sort of clear calculation in terms of the taper from as soon as you've issued the notice of non-renewal down to year ten, how that, how that tapers down. And you have to, and so the county would be required, once those notices of non-renewal have gone out, to use that formula every year to recalculate until we get down to zero by year ten in terms of the difference between the assessed value and the Mills Act value. So we wouldn't have any ability to change that formula. No, that's, that's state law.
But it's, and it's a ten-year formula. It's not a seven or a five or discretionary upon the cities. Once, once a notice of non-renewal is issued, it's a ten-year diminishing program.
Yeah.
So, so by doing that to all Mills Act participants, current participants who have not already received a letter of non-renewal, there are a few, they would be getting ten years from the notice from their next anniversary date, I believe.
It's ten years from the Mills Act recorded contract date.
Ten years, but it would be from their next anniversary of their, of their, of their contract date, according to the formulas stipulated by this state formula that, that Councilmember Wilkinson was describing. Is that correct?
When, when we grant the Mills Act, but we do so by contract, it's a ten-year, minimum of ten years. So we give the non-renewal notice that it will not be extended beyond that ten years. So there will be different lengths depending on when the property owner obtained their contract.
So it's ten years from their original contract date or ten years?
Yes.
No, it's, it's ten years from when you issue the notice of non-renewal, but you have to give sixty days notice of, it's complicated because it depends when their contract was issued.
To be sure.
But you have to give sixty days advance notice of the date that their contract was issued, and then it is giving them ten years notice to take effect from the following, from that date.
But Amy, I'm, I'm sorry, but you, you seem to be, you seem to be suggesting that if someone's in the program for three years, an issued non-renewal were, were issued, let's say this week, they would get the balance of the, of the ten years for seven more years. I don't know that that's the case.
And I will quite honestly say, I, I've reviewed this agenda item quickly and perhaps did not investigate or anticipate all of the questions, but I'm sure that we can follow up with answers after this meeting. It does sound, however, that Council Wilkinson has some expertise in this area.
It's just that Helga's been working with the county on some of this. So we've, we've got some, I don't know whether Helga wants to comment. I'm not, I don't know. The whole thing.
So what, what Councilmember Wilkinson said was correct.
Yeah, because I, I, I think our, our instructions and our, and our guidance to, to the city staff at our previous discussions of this was to understand that the intent of the program and that our city doesn't have, doesn't have the resources and the capacity and really the follow-through to, to maintain it long-term. But those that are, have entered into these agreements in good faith and the city has responded in good faith, that at the very least, from the point of non-renewal, allow for the minimum term that was allowed under that contract, even if they've already had two, three, or four years in the program.
That's correct.
Is that, so, I mean, that's our intent, and, and I hope that the implementation of it follows that suit, which I believe it does. I just wanted to confirm that.
It does.
Wonderful.
I was just going to add to that. I think staff is prepared to send out those non-renewals tomorrow. And so they will hit everybody in those, those that haven't already been sent non-renewal notices because they're let, they've already gone to their five years. It will go to everybody else who's at less than five years currently.
Let me open this up to public comment, please.
My name is Suzanne Demolin. Can you hear me? And I'm one of the five. So all the years out of the fifteen are not equal. So for the first five years, you get a significant tax reduction. When the non-renewal notice arrives, effective year six, you immediately get a big bump up in your taxes to, the illustration I was given is about eighty percent of what your Prop 13 taxes would normally be. And then you have very slow increases from year six through fifteen. So all those years are not equal. So when you cut off people who've only been in the program for two years, you're taking away three of the five years of their major tax benefit. Now, I probably used up a lot of my time, but I would like to make some other points. Could I have three minutes from now? Because we were clarifying the issue about ten years and five years.
Why don't you go ahead and, and we'll let it run, see how it goes.
Okay, great. So at the March 11th city council meeting, there was no vote formally terminating the Mills Act program. So I'm going to be speaking to you about it in the sense of that has not yet been decided. My basic message to you is don't throw out the baby with the bathwater. You support and appreciate the historical preservation program in Belvedere. That's very clear. I maintain that historical preservation would be naturally supported by a well-designed and properly administered Mills Act program. You expressed two main concerns with the program. The first one is the loss of tax revenue at $78,000 a year. This is really negligible. It's less than one percent of the city's budget. I think you recognize that homes that are rehabilitated and well-maintained enhance the city's tax base, and that is a gift that keeps on giving. It supports the values of nearby homes and therefore their tax assessments when they turn over to new owners. And on both accounts, that directly benefits the city and its residents. Furthermore, Belvedere enjoys one hundred percent of the benefit of having rehabilitated historical homes at only twenty percent of the cost, since the county absorbs the other eighty percent of the cost of property tax reduction. The second major concern you had was the lack of administrative staff to monitor compliance with the program and conduct inspections. This can be fixed by instituting an annual fee to be paid by the participating homeowners to cover the cost of administering the program. I also want to speak to the good faith aspect that was brought up by you, Mayor Mark. Thank you for that. You are correct. The five homeowners who are at risk of having their Mills Act agreements prematurely subjected to a non, non-renewal letter. We did enter this agreement in good faith. Why should our five agreements be cut short when twenty-four others have already enjoyed the full benefit or will continue to enjoy a full fifteen years on their agreements? What is the basis for disadvantaging five out of twenty-nine? I want to see you fix the Mills Act program, not abandon it. And so I'm asking you to do three things. One, rather than accelerate these five non-renewal letters, let these agreements continue to run while you figure out a new formula of requirements for joining and remaining in the Mills Act program. Two, consider tapping the relevant knowledge of Mr. Nouse and his committee members to help you formulate those requirements. Three, budget for a part-time staff person to oversee inspections and compliance to be paid for by instituting an annual participation fee for the homeowners who participate in the program. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Any other public comment? Seeing none. Madam Clerk, anyone online?
I see none.
Thank you. I'll close the public comment period and bring it back for deliberations and comments by the city council. Would anybody like to begin?
Did you want to?
So it's been a, a bit of a journey. I've probably been more involved than some of the other council members on assessing this program. And I've really come to a clear understanding of how difficult it really is to administer. And we've talked about it before, but having spent some time over the last few days and also with the, the county, it isn't just a burden for the city in terms of the administrative burden. And we keep messing up. This is the other piece, because we don't have a permanent staff member to administer this. It goes from one staff member to another, and non-renewals don't go out. And it, it's just a mess of a program for the city because of our very constrained resources. And it's a mess for the county because they're, we're the only city that the county is administering as well. And so there's just a lot of, a lot of work for very few participants. I think from an equity perspective, it's also important to sort of step back and see whether it's fair that our very scarce tax dollars are going to few properties who, for the most part, haven't done the relevant restoration work. And so from an equity perspective, it's very hard for us when we are, you know, duty-bound to spend our tax dollars very carefully, to be giving money away. And $75,000 or $77,000 for the city of Belvedere is actually about $375,000 in total that Mills Act participants get from the program. And that isn't just the city. Most of those, those tax dollars are lost by our school districts, and it's lost by the county. And so that's money that should be going to other agencies that we are just taking away from those agencies in addition to the $75,000 that we take away from our community. And we all know, as we'll hear in a little while, in terms of the open space ask, that we have a really constrained budget. And $75,000 for us would fund the debt that we have to the fire district in two years. That's where it could go. It funds our yellow bus program for three years. These aren't small tax dollars for our small community. They're relatively large, and they're even larger when you talk about the agencies at large that lose when we continue to give tax breaks to property owners because they have an old home, which is what we're doing. It's not because they're doing upkeep work, it's for that particular reason. So I think for me, the combination of the administrative nightmare of this program and from an equity perspective, it's very hard to ask for this program to extend beyond our legal and, and sort of ethical requirement, which is to taper down over the next ten years, which is what we, we're legally bound to do and is absolutely the right thing to do.
Thank you. I've, I've, I've closed the public hearing. I will note, we all have read your, your letter about the investments you made in your property and the permitted work that went into restore, restore the property. I don't think anybody is, 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 is claiming you haven't done the work. There hasn't been a significant investment in the property. I think the question that I would have, I don't mean to speak for anyone else, is it was, it was, it was a good ten or twelve years before the Mills Act agreement. And the Mills Act is designed for ongoing and, and, and future-based work. It's not meant to pay for, you know, work that was done in development or preparation or restoration of a home that isn't aligned with, with, with that same Mills Act agreement. Briefly, quickly, yes? I understand. I understand. I understand. Okay, I'll, I'll, I'll open back the public comment. Please, Suzanne, go to the mic if you could.
Thank you. So, thank you. You acknowledged, yes. In the case of my husband and myself, we did an enormous amount of work. We have invested many, many, many times the tax benefit we've gotten. But what about the other people? Councilperson Wilkinson made the comment that the properties just haven't done the work to maintain. Is that true? Do we know that for a fact?
I think that's the point of the fact that we, we, we don't have the monitoring system in place. We don't have the, the, the recognition of the permitted work ascribed to the, to, to the Mills Act agreements. And the flaw of the Mills, Mills Act agreements is, is that it doesn't call for it right now.
My, my point of view is that can be fixed. You can redesign the agreement to do what you think it should do.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, once again, I'll shut the, close the public comment.
Okay, sure, thanks. Well, I, I think this is a very difficult decision because in essence, we are sort of caught in a, between a rock and a hard place. We don't know if the work has been done or not done, or at least I don't know. And, and yet, we're, we, we do know from Mr. Ganas, when he was here last month, he made the statement that perhaps his committee could actually do more work than they actually do with the Mills Act prescriptives. And I don't know what that would look like. It, it just would be something we would have to take some time, look into, see if it was actually something that a volunteer committee could oversee. The other, the other issue is, as we've all mentioned, that coming into the concert, contract, everybody did do it in good faith. The community members, the residents, and the city. And so it is difficult to all of a sudden say, well, this was great, but no longer. So, and it, it seems that the reason we have to really face this tough decision is because we haven't done a good job in overseeing this act properly. And we, we haven't taken, as far as I know, we haven't taken the time to review it, to spend some time seeing, other than the monetary aspect of it, which of course is important, to see if there's something that could be done. I certainly support ending the Mills Act. It's when it ends for all these people is where my struggle is coming. So I understand, if I'm looking at this properly, it does seem that within the next three years, nearly everyone drops off. So we're looking at probably three more years of a loss of 25,000. Well, I think, doesn't everybody drop off already up there? They, they start the diminishing right away. Oh, so you're saying the city tax loss every year changes?
It, it, this tax loss changes every year because when assessed values go up, the gap changes. You have growth.
I missed that one. Okay. Well. Okay, so the money, the potential, the, or not potential, it's obvious that we will lose more than the 24,000 that would be coming off or in three years, I think. lose more than the 24,000 that would be coming off, or in three years, I think, would come off, it would actually be everyone but the, the last person, I think, to, to go on, so I guess I'm struggling with if there was a way to follow through on the five years for this group of people, but, and the Mills Act going forward, so that we would never allow any other people to join in, but if there was a way to assess and the impact onto our finances, and if there is a way to bring in this, the volunteer committee and perhaps look at some sort of, as Mrs. Demolin suggested, a fee to cover someone to come in and look, actually look at the work being done, or make sure it was being done.
Please.
I'm, I'm in favor of ending the Mills Act somewhat regretfully because I have really enjoyed the historic preservation that has been done in Belvedere. I think a lot of the historic preservation is going to continue because the people who own those beautiful houses will want to maintain and restore them in, in a way that is somewhat similar to what's being done under the Mills Act to date for the value of those houses themselves. I support what Commissioner Wilkinson said, and I, I think that's, that is the way we should proceed. One of the problems with the Mills Act and the way it's been administered in Belvedere, and I've approved Mills Act requests for many years now, is, is that many people misunderstand the, the way the act is to be administered, I, and I think I misunderstood it at, at one point. We, we look at these beautiful homes that have been restored at the time that they are requesting the Mills Act designation, and the Mills Act, as, as Mayor Mark pointed out, really intends to compensate those homeowners for work to be done in the future, so it's not just, just maintaining a threshold level of aesthetic, but it is continuing a process of, of restoration, and that's what's so difficult to implement and monitor and to assess whether, whether the intentions of the Mills Act are being carried out into the future over the time when this discounted tax process is, is playing out, so I would be in favor of the motion as it's written.
Thank you. Let me just comment myself, and we can certainly have a further discussion. I see the, the, the program as not only flawed inherently in the sense that it's benefiting very few, very, very few in relative, relative to the overall community, I think our, our, Suzanne DeMonte had, had suggested, it represents less than 1% of our budget, but it benefits less than 0.1% of the people, so that's a concern to me in that it's a very disproportionate benefit at a fairly onerous expense in time and money to the city. I'm also concerned, which I think Councilmember Wilkinson has brought up, about the administrative lack of efficiency associated with going forward with the program as it is, trying to maintain the dates and the schedules and the compliance of the program. I also take to note that the agreements very specifically identify that the effective term shall be 10 years, and it's an option to go beyond it, not to exceed 15, so while it may have been practiced to go to 15, it's not the term of the agreement, so I, I take that seriously, that the intent is to run it as a 10-year program with diminishing benefits to that agreement holder, and the fact that we went to the maximum allowed in our agreement, I don't see that as prescriptive of how we should go forward to necessarily terminate and sunset the program. So I, I, I can likewise vote to discontinue the program and treat existing agreement holders appropriately to the terms of their agreements and issue non, non-renewals to the full 10 years, recognizing that there are remedies for those individuals to address the council individually should they wish to. Councilman Cooper, do you have any other thoughts on that, or?
Thank you.
Okay, can I ask for a motion to approve the first reading of the ordinance?
So moved.
Thank you. All in favor of approving the first reading of the ordinance?
Aye.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Item 6B in the public hearing is introduction and first reading of an ordinance of the city of Belvedere to amend construction time limit ordinance. I believe we have a staff report from our building director.
Good evening, Mayor Mark, fellow council members. Before you tonight is the introduction and first reading of proposed ordinance changes for Belvedere Municipal Code Sections 20.04, .035, and 16.04, .010, as well as proposed amendments to the Administrative Policy Manual, Policy Number 14.4. All these are better known as the CTL Code, or the Construction Time Limit Code here within Belvedere. At the April 10th, 2023, and May 8th, 2023 council meetings, staff presented initial amendments to the CTL ordinance for council's discussion. At both hearings, council provided feedback to staff, at which point staff made the wanted amendments proposed by council, and that is the ordinance before you tonight. The proposed CTL ordinance moves Belvedere away from a system that penalizes violations and collects them at the end of a project towards a system with fixed-term building permits that would need to be extended or reactivated by payment of a fee. The ordinance tonight closely aligns with the ordinance that was presented at both the April and the May meetings last year. It closely aligns with the Tiburon, the current Tiburon CTL policy, which makes us, makes it easier for local contractors and property owners to have a more consistent area of regulations. I won't go into, to all details because not much has changed, we did eliminate some out-of-date language from the policy, but very minor amendments were made since the last time presented. Staff recommends that we approve the first reading of the ordinance and the policy amendments, and then schedule a second meeting for the second reading of the ordinance, and staff is open for questions at this time.
Thank you. Do we have questions for Brian?
If I may, Mayor Mark and council members, I do want to add one amendment to the ordinance before you for first reading. This would be a Section 4 to the ordinance, this would be an uncodified portion of the ordinance, and that language would be, "The adoption of this ordinance shall not in any manner affect any action or prosecution for violation of ordinance which violations were committed prior to the effective date hereof to being extrude as a waiver of any license fee or penalty required by or resulting from any such ordinances or affect the validity of any bond required to be posted, filed, or deposited pursuant to such ordinances." So this is just a provision indicating that this change would not interfere with the ability of the city to enforce the existing ordinance for those who are currently under the current regime, so this is just a way to ensure we're not left with a gap in the ordinance, so this would be an uncodified portion indicating that, that those who are under the current ordinance could, we, the town could enforce that current ordinance against those who are, currently have a building permit.
So this would become the new Section 4 of the ordinance, and Section 4 becomes Section 5 effective date?
Yes, yes, and then, and again, this is, this is not text of the actual ordinance that will go into the municipal code, this is text for interpretation purposes and for enforcement purposes, and I'll, I'll provide the exact language that will be added, and council will have that language before then, before adoption of the ordinance.
Mayor Mark?
Please.
I have a question. Council, just a, a point of clarification, since we have scores of open building permits, are you saying it's not retroactive to, to any project that has an open building permit on, on the date of adoption, or not applicable to any applicant who has extended their CTL as of the date of the adoption of the ordinance, or something else? We need absolute clarity to prevent litigation, I think, on this matter.
Yes, we, we want to ensure that for those who have, are currently, have already got a building permit, they would be under the previous scheme because there, at the time they got their building permit, they were told, this is the construction time limit, and if you violate it, you're subject to penalties, they were not told that they would have to renew the penalty, so we want to make sure we have that ability to continue to enforce our existing ordinance in the very unlikely event that anyone exceeds their time limits under the building permit.
Okay, so it's a data, so it's a date of the permit regardless of whether any extension is subsequently requested, or any fact after that permit, it's, it's the date of the, it is the date of the permit, is that correct?
It, it would be if they've already received, if they, they have an outs, if they have a current outstanding building permit, in other words, we could only enforce
Okay.
after second reading in 30 days, anyone who applies for a building permit after that date would be subject to the new ordinance.
Okay, thank you for that clarification, I, I think that's quite important.
So, so just, just, just for myself, I, I just, so as of the date of our second reading, any, any existing permits would be subject to the previously unedited Section 20.04.035 of our, of our municipal code, not the currently, not the potentially amended, same section?
That is correct, although technically it's 30 days after second reading, yes.
Understand.
Can I just clarify, there are some rules for density bonus law projects that apparently freeze the application date to the codes at the time, would that also happen with this, so would the current building permits be assigned to any, any density bonus project that would come in without a building, has yet to get a building permit?
SB 330.
That's a good question, and I will have to consult with my learned colleagues and get back to you on that one, I, I haven't gone, I, I need to go back and look at the language to see if it, it affects building permits or planning, or both.
I just have a quick question, I, and I, I think, Brian, you answered this earlier, but I wanted to just clarify it, that this is the first reading of the ordinance, and the second reading will come in the next meeting potentially, but we still have the opportunity, the, 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 the policy manual, I do have some questions and some comments on the policy manual, but that can be changed with only one reading at the subsequent meeting, so if we have comments either tonight, it can be reviewed, and it wouldn't require us, a, a, another first reading for the ordinance?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
That's correct, the, the ordinance does require two, two votes at least five days apart, but because the policy manual is adopted by resolution, it's just one, so if there are concerns, council could approve the first reading of the ordinance tonight and defer adoption of the policy manual to the second reading, that would be an option, or you could do it tonight, you really have an option there.
Okay, thank you.
I have a question of staff, and it, it might involve a hypothetical, but one thing that we often see, because the CTL's come to us on appeal, so there's often a question of doing the math. The original time period is based on the original valuation, am I correct?
Yes, ma'am.
So one thing that we very frequently see when these come up on appeal is that the project has expanded, and it's the expansion of the project that has caused the delay, and applicants go round and round about that, how much was under their control, what was not under the control, and a lot of other factors that we look at very carefully through the lens of equity and fairness. How does the new ordinance accommodate the fact that by the time they would need a new permit, which may be approved, the project valuation has greatly increased? Is that, does that affect any of this at all, do you, would, would staff be taking a second look at the project valuation at the time of this, of the second or even third permit?
I apologize, but I'm not clear on your, how would we handle kind of a serial permitted job?
Yes, that's the, that's the, that's the scheme that is presented, the schemata that's presented here, it's a very new model of looking at projects that take a long time to complete, so because the delay in completions is so very often due to expansion of the project and, and therefore increased valuation, how does that circumstance play out in the new scheme that we're looking at here?
I believe that is kind of the intent of proposing these amendments, is to have a complete project application ahead of time, we would like to know, we would, if you have a project, there's, is no longer a benefit in, in what they call piecemealing the project together, we would want the entire project upfront, and you would receive, the applicant would receive the benefit of maybe a longer time without needing to pay the reactivation fee, whereas in the, the current model, they would be penalized no matter what, whether they wanted to put piecemeal projects in or, or subsequent permits from one to the next, to the next, three, four, five, maybe, we are, it's, it's an attempt to promote comprehensive permitting, and that way, if you believe you need the 24 months, we do have that option to give you that 24 months now, if, in working with good faith with the, the city staff, that you provide an accurate valuation to your project. if, in working with good faith with the, the city staff, that you provide an accurate valuation to your project.
I'll just add one thing too. I think also if, if the project grows, then that building permit fee grows, right? And these extensions are based on three times, five times that building permit fee. So it would sort of parlay with the multiplier in each extension, right? If, if the valuation of the project grows, then presumably the building permit fee would also grow. And so that multiplier would be increased.
So does that mean it is re, you, you do a reevaluation at the time of the new permit? This really goes to the heart of the question.
Yeah.
It wouldn't be a revaluation, but if they're getting another, a second building permit, then the building permit fee would be.
I think there's, I, I think there's two opportunities and I, and I think if I can, once a, once a project is approved by the planning commission and receives an entitlement based on a preliminary evaluation, there would be a construction time length assigned to that project. There's, if between the, that entitlement and the application for a building permit, that value were to substantially change, there is an opportunity to go back to the planning commission to readjust that, I would imagine. Once, and that's not what you're saying, I understand. So this contemplates that if a project is issued a building permit and the scope and the scale increases over the course of that construction, which we see a lot of, it was, it would be the same 18 month permit, 24 month permit that would exist. And, and, and the building department, the planning department will have already said to them very clearly that your permit is, is what was issued at the time of day one of your permit. If you're going to increase your scope, you have to get it done in that period of time. And in this model, you would need to reactivate or extend the, the permit at a reactivation fee. That doesn't change, to some degree, what does change is the, the motivational aspects of this policy to try to encapsulate a, as Brian was talking about, a complete project as early as possible. Because it's, it's in this case, to the applicant's benefit to be comprehensive as possible, because then they get the most complete base permit before they're asked to renew that, that permit. So they're no, no longer playing a game trying to keep that value down. They're trying to be as accurate as possible, which helps both the applicant, the city, and I think the surrounding neighborhood who has a best, a, 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 a good expectation of what to see as a project. I, I think we're, we're doing ourselves and our community, the, the, not the best service by, by telling the community it's going to take 12 months or 18 months when it's not going to take that, that 12 months or 18 months. So I think that this, 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 this change and this, and this new approach is to simplify, to try to increase the project shortening motivation aspect of it, to relieve a lot of the cost and burden that the city has in administering this program after the fact. And most importantly, aligning the, the, this project shortening motivation to the point in time when it can be most applicably used. Our current C T L is years down after, after the fact, between the owner and the city. Contractor's not involved. The one person who has the most ability to shorten the project isn't involved in that at all. So here, this person would have to come in and get a new permit and put it on their next bill to their homeowner and describe to them why we're having to get a new permit because you're, because, because we haven't completed the, the project in the 24 months or the 18 months or the 12 months. So, so I think Brian stated it well. It's, it's designed to motivate the homeowner and the contractor not to shield a smaller project, you know, or shield a project in a, in a smaller wrapping, but to be as comprehensive as possible and be as accurate as possible, both for the city, but also for the surrounding community. So they, so they can have, have those expectations for what the project will be. They may not like it being longer, but at least they'll know that, that everyone's trying to be as transparent as possible.
Thank you very much for that clarification. So it sounds to me, Brian, that the initial construction meeting will have a very different conversation around valuation, expectation and, and the benefit of being as accurate as possible from the outset. Thank you.
We'll have the same conversation, but it'll just be different context. Again, we try to get everyone to get the project done, be as honest as they can every time and get the project done as, as quickly as possible. But we will have different wording and, and different explanations during that conversation.
And Brian, I'll, I'll also note that if you recall, one of the subjects, one of the topics we talked about in our retreat a few weeks ago was having a acknowledgement of that meeting. A, a document that goes through both for the homeowner and for the contractor, what you're describing and what is being agreed to in this meeting. And this will just be, th, th, this adds more credibility to that and more, and more significance to that document so that you're acknowledging that this is an, an 18 month permit, a 24 month permit. And if not literally, but figuratively, come hell or high water, it's going to be done by that point in time or you're going to have to come down here and renew that permit.
Correct, yes, sir.
Brian, can I ask a math question? So if we just take a hypothetical that you've got someone that's doing a 1.5 million, sorry, 1.5 million and $1 construction. So they say they want their 24 months and they say that's what it's going to cost them. And then they blow through that limit and then they come back and they say it's 3 million. And so you, they then spend another year or another year and a half so that they can get into the three times and potentially into the, the, the final phase. And then they complete the project. And you, we now have this final cost evaluation, which we've improved the process for that. And that shows that the construction costs were considerably higher than indicated during those different periods. You will go back and you will reset the actual building fees according to the final, correct? So you'll have one, for the first 24 months, you'll have it as one times whatever the right fee is. And then it will be three times multiplied by the actual until they'll get, they'll get a final bill, which will be significantly higher. Is that right?
Yes, we would maintain our current revaluation process of building permits, which gives us a grand total per se at the end of the project.
Okay.
So we, we're not eliminating or amending that procedure policy.
Okay.
We, we are solely looking at the, the C T L policy tonight. So we would then come back, depending on the documentation we received for additional permits or, or added scope of work. And we would, again, do that revaluation process that we currently do.
And there's no, there's no circumstances in which they, much later on, significantly expand the project. And therefore, the first period, they can say, well, the value was really only this small amount. So I only want to pay a bu, building permit fee of a small amount for the first two years. Then we study, suddenly added on this giant scope, that never happens. And you just don't allow that, you just do the final cost and it's the whole project.
It, it does happen, but again, that the, the, we base the revaluation fees off the project total, the total valuation. You, you could try and shell game in any way you'd like, but the, the total cost is the total cost and that's what we'll base fees off of.
Okay, now I'm just thinking about these properties on the lagoon that sometimes do half a property and then the other half of the property with a gap in between. We'll never capture them, correct? Because they're two totally separate projects effectively.
Yes, so I, I believe you're talking in the context of, of the FEMA.
Yeah.
So again, if, if they comply with a phased approach, as we allowed per policy and procedure, and they did a scope of work, waited their allotted year, came back with another permit for a different scope of work, those two are seen separately.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, any other comment, please?
I had a lot of questions about this, I apologize, but I appreciate the time. Another thing that we see complicating this C T L process, we're now amending, but I can see could really continue with additional complications in the new scheme is, is the, the 90 day extension pertinent to a landscaping plan that is part of a larger project? So I wanted to just ask a couple of questions about that. In this staff report, actually, I think it's part of the, part of the ordinance in section C two. It says, and, and this has come up before us on appeals. So sometimes we learn from, from that process. It says to receive the additional 90 days, the applicant must file an application and make a deposit against the time of completion of the landscaping work. I would really like to see words added in that section. To receive the additional 90 days, the applicant must file an application before the permit expat, they, they, we can't use this language, C T L runs anymore, but before that first statutory time period runs, if they want to extend it, they can't come back a month later and say, oh, by the way, I want another 90 days. And we have seen this come up. So I would really like to take this opportunity to pin that down. The, that additional landscaping extension must be applied for, before the applicant has, has run into trouble finishing the original work. Because it is part of the broader project. And if it's not applied for before the end of the, the lit, time limit on the broader project, it's really not part of the project, part, part of that prior permit.
I don't think adding the language is an issue. I would just like to bring up, if someone is applying for the extension, so say the project, they, they have their 18 months and they do apply for their extension to finish the construction. So most likely, they would not be at the point of landscape. They would still be constructing the structure or site walls or things like that. So prior to that expiration, you would, you think they should apply for the landscape extension? Or prior to expiration of, say, their first reinstatement fee? Because they may not, at the point of the reinsta, the first reinstatement, they may not be at the point of, of installing landscaping elements. They may be at a different point, an earlier point in construction.
They, they don't have to complete it, but they have to apply for it. So they have to say, we're not complete, we're not finished with the first part of the project. Now is when we're applying for the 90 days at the end of that period, not starting today. What we've seen is people are already over their C T L and decide, oh, another 90 days and I'll apply for landscaping. And, and this is the time to, to clarify the ordinance, so that kind of abuse doesn't happen.
So understood, thank you. I, I do want to make clear that the 90 day landscape extension is not a blanket extension for the project. It is for three specific elements as part of the landscape, which is the planting of plants, the installation of drip irrigation only and ground cover.
I understand that, but it's been argued before us over and over and over again to the contrary.
No problem.
Yeah, Brian, you might want to just add a little clarity. After that, to receive the additional 90 days, the applicant must file an application prior to the last granted permit expiration date or words to that effect.
That would be great.
Because I think, I think that solves the issue of where in the cycle it happens. If it's the last granted expiration, permit expiration date, because you want it to be not the first one, any, whatever the last permit expiration date has been granted.
Yeah, that, that's great, thank you.
And Brian, I mentioned to, there's, I've, there's, there's a couple of comments specifically in the policy manual, which, which I don't know if we can, need to get into, I'll, I'll get them to you after. But I, I think Amy's suggestion of deferring the adoption of the policy manual is probably a good one till the second reading because I think there's some legacy language in there from the current ordinance that probably needs to be cleaned up. And I know council member Wilkinson has commented on some of those as well. So why don't we plan to do it that way? And, and we'll get you some comments on that following this meeting.
Yes, sir, I'd be happy to work with you on that.
Any more questions or comments before I open up to the public comment, but please?
I had a question about the estimated value chart and the time limits. Do you, Brian, do you feel in your analysis of how many projects get done at each of these levels? That these zero to 100, 100 to the 500, 501 to a million 5, do those seem appropriate for the times, the time limit now that we'll be giving each of these? Versus maybe making them a little bit, perhaps a little bit wider in range?
I, I believe they are accurate. The, the one, the projects that we see go the longest are, are just the highest valued projects. They're the ones that, that take the longest. So the zero to 100,000, the 100,000, $1 to 500,000, those projects are, are always closely aligned with each other. Maybe some of them finished before, maybe some of them are a little over. The ones we see or that we can think of in the past, since just in my tenure here, are the ones that were always valued over the one and a half million and, and, and up from there. So it could be 6 million, it could be 8 million. It really depends on the terrain, the type of finishes that were ordered or, or being shipped in and things like that. So I, I think the, the, the table is fair. It aligns with our previously provided C T L dates, plus we added another one for, for large, large projects. But again, sometimes projects are just so large that get approved, that get permitted, that they just can't get done within that time.
Right.
But I, I believe that, that is a constant conversation with the contractor and the property owner. And everyone is well aware of that prior to the issuance of the building permit.
Do you, do you think that top level of 1,500,000? I, I mean, given what you're saying about it's the bigger projects and the numbers you gave were rather enormous. Do you think that that should, do you think that we're giving, at this point, perhaps a more moderate home a, extra time? So that as council member Wilkinson mentioned, you could do a million 501 and wind up getting your 24 months versus getting the 18 months? And should that 24 months perhaps be a larger number and then down from there?
The total time amount, I will, I will defer to council on the, the total C T L time amount. We, we will have outliers that sometimes maybe their, their initial construction estimation is 1.4 million. The contractor will say, hey, just give us an extra six months, we'll, we'll put it down as 1,550. That, that happens now with our current system. We'll have a project that comes in around high force. And the contractor may, we used to know the finishes, so we put it down as higher end finishes. Maybe it comes in higher, maybe it comes in less, but they'll put the, the valuation above the current threshold to get 18 months.
Right.
And so we'll always run into that, no matter what system we use, I believe. But again, this one's just more, a, more of a straightforward system. It provides, without going into such finite detail of 100,000 to 150 gets six months, 150 to 200 gets seven months.
Right.
Things like that. I mean, this is a generality, generalization of, yeah, most projects with these valuations fit into that timeline.
Oh, great, thanks.
If, if I can follow up on that, I, I did a very imprecise, unscientific survey of our last couple of years of planning approvals. And they sort of came in, in values quite a bit, you know, smaller projects, under a million dollars. And then some very large, big, big projects, you know, two and a half and, and, and well above as well. There were a lot in that one to two range. And I, I guess following up council member Cooper's question, in that range, because, because we're trying to shorten projects, you know, that's the ultimate goal of, of, of this ordinance and this project. If we were to take that threshold between the 18 and 24, move it to two, to 2 million dollars, for example, in your experience, are those projects in the one to $2 million range? Do they get done in 18 months or is that an impossibility at that range in our city? And do we want to be more accurate and more set expectations correctly for the community and for the applicant themselves?
To be completely honest, it's a case by case scenario. Some projects, depending on their topography, their location, the amount of open space they have on private property to park construction vehicles. Some properties have expansive car yards and things like that, where they could fit six or eight trucks on private property, have more workers there doing the work, getting it done. They would there doing the work, getting it done. They would, they would get the project done faster than a similar project with only three trucks. So it, it really depends. But again, consistently, we see these projects, I mean, at that point, we're talking most likely differences in finishes and, and being delivered, things like that. It, it's able, I've seen projects able to be done that are 1.5 million in 18 months. I've seen projects that are valued at, at 1 million not be able to get done in 18 months.
Interestingly, most of the projects under $2 million aren't full home renovations. They're, they're a modification or they're, you know, you know, you know, a remodel of, of some sort. So which would, would have a greater possibility or, or potentially be done in the 18 months. So, so I, I, I think that is a question and I, and I, and I have myself thought about should that threshold be two instead of 1.5 just to keep that project shortening motivation for those, those, for Belvedere, it's, you know, it's, it's mid-range, but, but that is mid-range for some of the projects that we do see.
I have one additional question, which is, would it be sensible to have some kind of indexation on these limits, given how much building costs accelerate? Or is the idea that you'd bring this back every five years or 10 years to revise those ceilings?
Have we revised these? I mean, we haven't revised them in a while. So I mean, that, that's, that's some of my point about the $2 million is that what was a 1.5 million dollar, dollar project is really not the same thing anymore.
Correct. But you would have to think of it in the, in the same context of if the housing market fell as well. We would then have
I'm not sure.
A higher end, a higher end with a, with a lower valuation or, or something like that. It, because it, because it would go both ways. That's the housing market or the cost of construction creep up. It may make this table obsolete at, at, at one point. The same thing, the opposite could happen. Construction costs could go down. The housing market may fall. And then we would be providing too great of a window, possibly.
It's, it's, I guess it's a question to our attorney and/or Robert. I, I assume the ordinance, we don't need to put in there that this can and should be revised, you know, based on price indexes in the future. I mean, we can do it anyway, right?
Yes, council at any point can amend any ordinance. If, if you wanted, you could add a finding in to, to let future councils know this was your thinking at this point, that we recommend, you know, staff present a report or provide us with, you know.
But there's no automatic trigger, as Councilmember Wilkinson is talking about, is to put in some sort of index that would.
I mean, you could, you could link it to consumer price index. You could do, you could do something, but you would have to, you would have to link it to some measurable impact in order to do that. And yeah, so, so that would be.
But that would still require council ordinance, you know, a resolution to change the ordinance in two readings and the whole bit, or could it be more triggered to it?
I'd have to think about this, but we probably could develop a way that it would trigger. We could say, you know, but, but if you're, if you've got.
Maybe reference an outside table.
Yeah. I mean, you would ha- if the table's in there, then you, you'd probably want to take the table out or we'd, we'd have to think about how to structure it to do that. I think it's possible. We'd have to put some thought into it and then figure out if it, if it is the consumer price index that you want to link it to, which I'm not sure is really the measurement you do want to link it to here.
I mean, I would think, I mean, doing it every year just gets, those numbers just look really odd. I'm just wondering whether, given that council turns over and staff turns over, whether there's any way to sort of trigger a review over, I don't know, every three, five years or something, just to see where those ceilings should be changed? I don't know when this policy was last reviewed before today. When did we last look at those ceilings? Never. So maybe, I don't know how often we need to do it, but at some point, it's, these numbers aren't going to make sense in 10 years' time. They probably won't make sense anymore.
Brian and Amy, can, can we leave you with the, with, 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 with the task to, or the, or the challenge to figure out a way to inform, you know, future councils and future, you know, planning and building directors that every three to five years they should, they, these, these, these price thresholds should be reviewed?
Thank you.
And I guess going back and trying to see about this range in the chart, I, I know we keep running into all the COVID issues and how difficult it is to judge how much time actually a project has taken in the last few years because we have so many that are still granted, the 18 months, I think it was for, due to COVID issues. But it, if there, I don't know if there's a way to look at, as Mayor Mark said, that at this point, the 1,500,000 is in this neighborhood really a more of a moderate remodel, not really a, and if indeed most of those could easily get done in 18 months, might we look at the, the 2 million?
Can I make the suggestion? And I, and I would assume similar to the, the suggestion in the ordinance that Councilmember Kimmister suggested, that changing that, that threshold from 1.5 to say two, as an example, would not preclude us from, from, from approving our first reading. Can we, can I make the suggestion that, Brian, we look at and try to normalize some, some, some past construction projects based on price to see how long they would have taken? And by normalizing, I mean, try to, try to opt out, try to, try to select out the, the COVID disruptions, and I can help you with that certainly, to report back next time we, we, we look at this, that we in fact have validated the 1.5, or we do suggest that, that that threshold go to X or Y. Is that, is that a, a suggestion keeping us within the parameters of our first reading?
Well, generally at the first reading, you're going to want to introduce the ordinance as you anticipate adopting it. So, you know, I, I think.
Well, we've suggested two things right now. One is to add a few words to that, that subparagraph two C and potentially change, you know, the 1.5 to 2.0.
Right. But are we, are, are you asking it to be changed tonight? Are you asking it to be changed at the next?
I understand what you're saying.
Right.
I have no issue with it going up to two if that seems to be the consensus.
Yeah. I think, I, I, I think it, 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 it provides the right motivation. And a couple of the fact that as, as Councilmember Wilkinson pointed out, we haven't adjusted these numbers in quite a while. It's probably a reasonable round number to, and as we pointed out, sort of certainly my planning experience, and I'm not sure how Councilmember Kimmister feels about this, but the last couple of years, those, those one to $2 million projects aren't big projects. They're, they're, they're certainly sub, substantive projects, but they're not the biggest ones that, that require the full 24 months.
So, so just to be clear, we would amend line three of the table to read 500,001 dollar to 2 million. Line four of the table would read greater than 2 million.
Yes. Without objection.
Yeah. And the other, I agree with that. And I, I hadn't really thought about it up to now, but it's important to remember that the point of this exercise is to balance the needs of the applicant, or the reality of the applicant, and then, and the needs and the reality of the community. So by recognizing that projects have become more expensive and a home remodel can easily be 2 million, where it might've been 1,500,000, five years ago or 10 years ago, I think is recognizing that balance and bringing in the needs of the community in an appropriate way.
I just had a couple of little suggestion, word suggestions, although one might be a bigger conversation.
Councilmember, if, if, no, 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 I don't mean to interrupt you. I'm sorry. We haven't opened a public comment yet. And, and let me, let me, if you don't mind, let me do that. And then we'll get some comments back with direction. And I've, I've been the worst at that myself. So let me open the public comment for this item before we bring it back for deliberation and, and, and further guidance to City Council. Anyone wish to speak on this item in the room? Mr. Johnson, please?
How's that?
Perfect.
Thank you. Congratulations, by the way, on coming up with a new approach. This is quite a substantial change. I remember back in May of 2023 where we were trying to deal with some nuances to make it better. As we all know, this started back in the 1990s. We've been dealing with this issue because of the topography in Belvedere and the closeness of the residents to each other for, what? Well, since then. I think the objectives are not in disagreement. I think we're trying to go in the right direction. But I had a kind of a major question that I didn't hear addressed, and that is, it appears to me, correct me if I'm wrong, what we're really doing is also, maybe it's an unintended consequence, I don't know, but we're adding substantial time for any one individual project. Maybe I've misread this or 30 pages, but just a question for a single family home, what is the increase from our current ordinance to implementation of this ordinance? And then for other buildings other than a single family home? I think that should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you. Before I respond or comment to that, any other comments here in the room? Please.
Hi, I'm Pat Kirpiat. I am the Chair of Planning, but I'm here speaking for myself this evening. And I want to say that I applaud your decision to raise the amount on the 24 month construction time limit to a higher value. I know that I hear very often, people are concerned about living with construction. And I know they get 18 months and then they get an extra six. So the 18 month is not really the problem. The 24 month and the time that they get, especially when they get to the third tier where it goes to city council, can expand a construction project over four years. And so I think that that's something that can impact the whole community and it can impact those around a construction project for a much longer time than what's current. And I know the current program is, is, needs to be changed. But I just want you all to think about that by the time someone in a 24 month project gets to the final increase on, by city council, that they're going to be able to have a project, if the city council allows the full additional eight month, that they will be able to have a four year project for a single family home and what that will impact. And just think about it, if you were living next door to a project like that, how you would feel. And that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no more hands raised here in the room. Madam Clerk, anyone online?
Mayor Mark, I see no hands raised.
Thank you. Oops, sorry. I'll bring it back to the council for deliberation. Let me just comment, if I could, on actually both the comments and Mr. Johnson's question about the length of the permits and, and how it compares. Frankly, the, the way we were looking at this, as Brian and I were laying this out, was really trying to look at what current projects, how they are managed and what this potential scenario would look like. And current projects right now have no check, no lag whatsoever. It just goes as long as it would go. And they, there's a, there's a fee hanging out there in the future, but it's not necessarily any, any requirement. If a project is given 18 months, it could take four years, it could take three years and, and, and face the consequences later. This is intended to recognize that projects will take what they take realistically. We understand that. But that there will be real checks and real consequences for those intermediate, intermittent steps in order to extend that permit. So it's not necessarily granting the time. It's, it's recognizing that the projects will take that time, no matter what we do about it, and trying to put some downward pressure on that time and to simplify the process for the city to recapture its, its costs associated with further maintaining, further managing and further inspecting those projects. So it's a, it's, it's, it's that approach to it. And with that in mind, actually, Brian, that, that reminds me, in the ordinance itself, number five in the section two B five, where it talks about that last step, it says a charge of up to five months. It should also say up to a third of the length. Because at, at that point, in theory, the, the project's nearing completion and the city council should have the right to extend that permit up to a third of the original permit length, not, doesn't need to be just the third of length. It should be up to it in both those circumstances.
What is the reason for up to five times at that point? Why, why isn't it just five times?
Just though the city has two reasons. So the city, city council has discretion on, on, on the amount because the, it may, it may not require all the time, so they could do that. And I think based on the scale of the project, we run into state ordinances relating to maximum penalties per day. I think that's, that's, that's correct.
Okay, thanks.
So we're at council for deliberation. Thoughts, questions, not questions so much, but thoughts and guidance for the first reading?
Mayor Mark, I don't, I don't mean to interrupt, but in, in the section that you just previously, subsection B five, I don't believe it states that in, in that section. Would you like us to add that language?
It doesn't say up to three times. We have the up to five, but in the subsections above, we say equal to three times.
No, I'm talking about the, the section, I'm talking about section five below that.
Yeah. So we don't have the.
That, that section is, is intended to provide counsel more discretion.
Five times the amount. So, so it, it's already, it already contemplates that last extension is subject to the council's determination.
Yes, sir.
Both in, in, in term as well as up to five times, which is perfect. So, so if, if the council at that time determines, because, because they would have had two expired permit dates, at that point, they could give them 60 days. They could give them, you know, whatever, whatever required and, and impose whatever conditions and impose up to five times that fee.
Correct. Yes, sir.
I understand. Thank you for clarifying that.
So, so I had a que- this is, continues to be my questions of staff, actually, although I know we are in the deliberation period. As soon as you say up to, it invites a consideration of conditions. And one thing that is, is a big part of the conversation if these C T Ls come up to council on appeal at this point, is whether delays were outside the control of the applicant. And so I'm not really sure whether those kind of things would be something that would be subsumed in up to or not, but it invites that objection. Over the years, when I hear these, these mitigation, I guess you'd say, factors brought up by applicants, it, it seems as though those factors are thought up after the fact, sort of come up on the appeal. And I wonder if this ordinance or the policy manual that we've been looking at later, might include a requirement that if the applicant believes that the delay that, that triggered the requirement to apply for new permits under the new scheme, if the applicant believed that those were due to factors beyond their control, that they
factors beyond their control, that they should put the city on notice by providing a written statement of any mitigating factors they believe are pertinent to the appeal. At the time, when you're making the decision to require this next permit, as opposed to some later time when it might be appealed to city council, it seems that that would save a lot of staff time. And it would, it would clarify a lot of the objections to the, to the penalties, whether they're monetary or in the form of these, these subsequent requirements.
So you would be looking just for documentation that they would still pay the, pay the reinstatement fee, obtain their additional time, and then submit documentation of?
I don't see, I'm sorry to interrupt because I, I only interrupt you because you may, I may not have been clear. So these mitigation factors have been very much a part of the appeals. And I'm sure they come to you, oh, the delay was beyond my control. And, and that's very subjective and sometimes it's absolutely valid. And sometimes it's not. But it seems to me that, but so number one, does this new scheme even allow that conversation? If it, if it doesn't, it should be made very clear that it doesn't. If it does, I think it would be helpful to have a requirement either in this ordinance or in the policy documents that we would be looking at, the procedures documents we'd be looking at next month, that you, that the city requires that, that those factors be provided to the city at the outset rather than on the backend, which is where we get them now.
Can I take a crack at that?
Yeah.
I, I think we were trying to take it out of the ordinance in the sense that taking it and putting it at the California Building Code level, meaning the requirements and the appeal process that are and the exceptions that are allowed in the California Building Code, when there's, which are stipulated in that code, Native American resources found, biological resources. There are urgency ordinances for fires or, or COVID in this case, that are mandated. California Building Code would require those extensions. And those are, we're following it regardless. We're, we're trying to take that out of our ordinances. So I use the expression, come hell or high water. There really shouldn't be a circumstance that would give some of the justification to extend a permit that wouldn't be justified and validated by the California Building Code.
Okay.
So, so we're, we're taking it out of our discretion.
Okay.
So Brian can, can point to, show me in, show me in urgency ordinances, show me the California Building Code, show me what you found and what are the circumstances and not that it's rained a lot in July.
I think that's fantastic because that last phrase was exactly what I was going to raise, that we, we honestly get arguments that applicants should not be subject to C T L penalties or any penalty, whatever, because it was raining on January 26, 2022. We get that. And it over and over and over again. And was it raining or than usual? And was it beyond, is that beyond your control? And so if you are saying that one of the things this thing does is remove that, I'd, I'd be absolutely in favor of that. Where does it say that?
Well, we've taken out exceptions and an appeal process.
Yeah, exactly. It is addition by subtraction. We no longer state it, so then it is no longer allowed.
Okay. I think that's very helpful. And once again, maybe a different context in that initial construction meeting to, to, to set the expectations. But I, I think that's excellent.
Are we just commenting now?
Yeah, commenting, yeah.
So I think this is a really well-crafted policy. So thank you to Brian and Peter for all of the, I know it's been a labor of love for the both of you to get to where we are today. I don't see any holes in it. I think we have precedent from Tiburon to know that it works more or less in the same way. And so we're likely to have good success with it. And I think for, it takes out that contentious part of C T Ls, which are always so problematic when they come to the city council. I think they're problematic between the contractor and the owner of the property. There's just, it takes out a lot of the difficulties and hopefully motivates people to complete their properties, their renovation work more quickly. I don't know whether it will, because I think when you're talking about very big dollar properties, these numbers are not going to move the ball for them in terms of whether they complete quickly or slowly, that's other factors for them that are going to drive that. But I think we're doing the best that we, that we can with, with what we have. And I think it's a really great improvement on our policies.
To Pat Kirpiat's question, which I think is something that is front of mind for many residents, are we just now allowing four-year projects? And I, I think it might be helpful, at least for me, to to do the math, someone has a calculator. When we see these $300,000 C T L penalties, those already are four-year projects. I, I can't remember exactly, was it, it's at that point 1,200 a day or something? Is that correct? And, and.
That's the maximum it can get to, yes. That is the maximum it can get to, yes.
So am I correct that by the time they get to 300,000, they're already in the C T L penalty period for three or four years? I mean, that's a, that's a lot of days at 1,200 a day.
Correct. The first 120 days is $90,000. So you could, you know, do the math after, after that assumption. But again, enlarging the, the table won't increase the length of the, of the work. The work is the work and it's going to take however long, no matter what. When I was in the trades, I, I built custom homes and it was, the work is the work. Whether it takes one year or it takes four years, that's the work we're going to do for this permit. And again, I don't, I don't believe that increasing that window is going to lead to a rash of, of larger projects or anything like that. But the projects are going to get done no matter what. We're just providing a more succinct and comprehensive code to address that.
With that explanation, I, I, I think that this really is a good change. I like the idea that we're aligning with Tiburon. A lot of the people that are building the houses and designing the houses work in both communities. So it makes sense to align it. But I did want to be able to reassure our residents that the intent, our intent tonight is not actually to extend the time period four years or beyond, but, but to nudge the applicants in the direction of more efficiency.
Yeah, I, I think, I think that is well said. I, I think it, it is intended and I'm hoping to see, I don't know that it's going to change the, as Brian and, and Councilmember Wilkinson talked about it, a large project's still going to take, take its time because they're going to want it the way they want it. But I think especially in, 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 in the, in the middle of the spectrum, there are the checks and it will motivate a more timely completion. And most importantly, it does address, address a more immediate and a more responsive cost recovery approach for our, for our, for our department. And in fact, at its extreme, we're taking a significant haircut on the, on the, on the fee side. I mean, it's, it's, it's less money to the city because our goal isn't to raise money here. Our goal is to hopefully shorten the length of these projects.
So, not that I want to throw in a nightmare, but do you ever foresee a home taking longer than four years? Because do we anticipate that in your number five?
Well, doing the, let's, 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 let's build up a worst-case scenario. As, as our planning chair talked about, if, if a, if a larger project has 24 months as a base permit and they come with a check in hand to get another eight months, taking it to 32 months, and then 31 and a half months later, they come in or through one, 30, one and a half months, they come back to our, to our front desk and with another, another check in hand, they get to 40 months.
Right.
And prior to 40 months, they would have to come to city council. And at that point, the city council, prior to 40 months, prior to, prior to the expiration at 40 months, they'd have to come to city council. And they'd be, they'd be, they'd be asking at that point for an extension to finish the project. And that, and the city council has discretion to, to, to issue one month permit or an eighth month permit or a 12-month permit beyond that point in time for up to five times that original fee. And, but at that point, the city council is empowered to say, what's going on? This isn't working. You know, we're going to ask that you hire and stipulate that you, that you hire building manager X to come in and, and oversee this project because you're clearly not getting the job done. And if you are a, a owner builder and you've lost control of this project, we're going to require that you hire Hadley down the street. I made that up, I shouldn't have said that. Whomever down the street to, to, to make sure that the project is done completely. So we can impose conditions or stop the project until they get their act together at that point to try to reach a timely conclusion. Because it's already been at that point, you know, three-plus years. And to get to 48 would, would be having gone through city councils' stipulations on how to complete the project and for a pretty hefty fine at that point in time.
Is that something that can be accommodated in the policy manual? To kind of the explanation you just gave?
Yes.
I mean, I think there's something in there similar to that already. But I think maybe we want to make sure it's clear.
I think that, that was my comment about the, the policy manual and why I think ideally we approve the first reading, but defer the proposed amendments to the A P M. Because I think the ordinance says it better than, than the policy manual does. And I think the policy manual should arguably be more common language than the ordinance and, and be more straightforward in how that works.
And just a kind of a piece of mind for you, Councilmember Cooper. We could have that scenario now with absolutely no checks and balances the entire time until after, the only one would be after the 18 months or after the six, the six-month extension to the 24 months. If they go past the 24 months, they could get to 40, 42, 48, 50, 56, and no one has a say in anything. So this provides more of a check and balance and, and more of the opportunity for the, the city and the property owner or the contractor to work hand in hand in getting the project completed.
Yeah, I, I absolutely agree and think this is a great, great step forward. And I didn't want to bring up a nightmare, but I just thought it was worth it to go through it quickly while we were in that spot. The only other, I, I'm hoping under the letter B, which is right above the chart time limit guideline, I just wanted to suggest that we add in one word that says, "This chapter shall apply to any project for which a design review approval is required or any project requiring a building permit with a value of 50,000 or greater." Because I think it's a little confusing. It almost reads as if it's a design review project that is 50,000 or greater. So I just was hoping to add the word in.
It's sort of a, it's, it's sort of a sequential sentence, isn't it? You know, A, you know, A is designer view, B is $50,000 or greater, C and/or C is a value of construction. I mean, I'll, I'll defer that to Amy and stars, whether it's, but it's, it's certainly either one of those. It's, maybe it says, any of those conditions need to apply. Yeah.
That was the only suggested wording, otherwise I agree. And thank you for all the work.
Thank you for all the work that's been done.
Not to cut off any further comments, but in, should we, like I mentioned before, I'd suggest we approve the first reading of the ordinance and defer the proposed amendments to the policy manual pending some edits that we discussed this evening. Do we need a motion for the approval? A motion for the first reading, correct?
Yeah, we need to approve the first reading with the amendments as discussed.
I move that we approve ordinance 2024-02 amending section 2004-035 and six, oh, and 16.0403 of the Velveter municipal code and that we defer the consideration of the amendments of the A P N 14.4 to subsequent meeting.
And just to clarify, we're, we are introducing and approving first reading with amendments?
With amendments, which, which would include the, the one council read earlier in this evening. Okay.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, unanimous. Moving on to other schedule items, item 7A, discussion of possible action concerning funding for the Martha project, Martha property project. Sorry for keeping you guys here all this evening. Should we defer to the applicant or is there a staff report?
I think I'll just give a very brief introduction before we turn it over.
Okay, thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Mark and Council. The item before you this evening is a funding request from the Trust for Public Lands for financial contribution towards the purchase of the Martha property. This request was brought to a special finance committee meeting on March 26, where the committee reviewed the request within the context of the city's draft preliminary fiscal year 2425 operating and capital budget and made a recommendation of funding up to 125,000 while still meeting our other budgetary obligations. I would like to point out that the city's budget for next year and the forecast period is constrained due to a seven and a half percent increase in the Tiburon Fire Protection District contract fee and several large upcoming capital projects, notably the Seawall Repair Project and a retaining wall repair project, which does limit the availability of discretionary funds. We are bringing this item to you this evening as the trust needs a decision on the city's commitment by mid-April. But any contribution payment approved tonight would not be due until next fiscal year. And at this time, I would like to turn over the presentation to Erica Williams, Program Director of the Trust for Public Lands, and Jerry Ryson of the Tiburon Open Space.
Good evening, Mayor Mark and Councilmembers. I'm Jerry Ryson from Tiburon Open Space. And also speaking tonight will be Erica Williams with Trust for Public Lands. We have a very brief presentation for you all. And so first slide obviously is the visual of what is about to be purchased, a great resource for Velveter and Tiburon. The next slide, please. This gives a little orientation of where everything is. It's an opportunity to take what has already been purchased in the 1990s and essentially double it, which would be a great biological benefit as well as recreational. Next slide, please. This gives a sense of the trail opportunities as well as the biology that is existent on site. As it's noted, there's eelgrass beds near, on the, just offshore, as well as the Kyle Pond, which is on private land, but is has a very rare red-legged frog breeding site and the frogs forage onto Martha. So it's an extremely good combination. Also nearby is the Tiburon Uplands Preserve as well as the E S, also known as Rhomburg Science Center. Next slide, please. This just gives a listing of some of the biological benefits that are there as far as plant life and the frog. And then next slide shows further photos of the plant life that is very. And then next slide shows further photos of the plant life that is very unique to this area. If you've walked it, you're aware that a property is loaded with serpentine. And that creates an environment where only very unique plants that can tolerate that toxin grow there. Next slide, please. This is a reminder of the support that your citizens gave to Measure M back in November of twenty twenty two, as well as your support of Measure A, which is the county open sales tax for parks and open space. Specifically and clearly Measure M passed with seventy four point seven six percent yes, needing two thirds. It was a very strong sign of support. Next up will be Erica Williams and obviously we'll answer questions later. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Mark and council members. Thank you so much for your time and consideration this evening. My name is Erica Williams. I am Senior Project Manager with the Trust for Public Land. I manage our Bay Area Land Acquisition Program. While I'm a native of Mill Valley, I've lived in Tiburon for almost fifteen years and I've served on the Tiburon Planning Commission for over eight years, currently chair of the commission. So I'm, I'm local. I, I, the slide that's up here is just to provide an overview, kind of a very quick summary of the last few years and how we got to where we are today. As we know, Jerry Reisen has been actively working to protect this property for over thirty years. The Trust for Public Land has been monitoring this property for over ten years, recognized immediately the conservation value of this landscape of this really pristine ridgeline property. And very intensively, in the two years leading up to June of twenty twenty two, worked to negotiate an option agreement with the landowner. The property has been held by a family-owned corporation in the family for over a hundred years. It's a large family. It took a lot of effort to get under option. The property was originally listed at a hundred and ten million, came down to sixty three million, and they agreed upon purchase price when we got under option in June of twenty twenty two was forty two point one million. At that time, I think it's important to note that the, the landowner actually had full entitlement, had approval from Marin County to build forty three large homes. So we really do see this as, as Jerry has often referred to his committee was once referred to, the Tiburon Open Space is the Lance Chat, Lance Last Chance Committee. But this really does feel like the last chance to protect this property. The alternative really is development of forty three large homes, which clearly would impact all of Tiburon and all of Belvedere for many years, years of construction and then just years of additional traffic. So I just wanted to sort of provide that quick overview. Next slide, please. Before I get into the details of some, some key milestones, transactional milestones. So at the time we got under option in June of twenty twenty two, we also entered into a purchase and sale agreement with the Marin County Open Space District. And under that agreement, if we acquire, if and when we acquire the property, we will transfer it to Marin County for the Open Space District to own and manage as open space, public open space. So this is a transaction that will result in a, a, a public benefit. This asset would be available to everyone for free in, not just in Tiburon and Belvedere, but, you know, regionally in Marin County. So I think that's an important point. Soon after we got under option, we, we worked hand in hand, all of us at the community, Jerry, the Trust for Public Lands, to pass Measure M. And that had overwhelming support, the combined support between Tiburon and Belvedere was almost just under eighty percent. And once that passed in November of twenty two, we started really fundraising intensively at that time. That was a threshold issue for us, because as you'll see in, in the next slide, a lot of funding does come from this bond. Oh, if you could go back to the last slide, sorry. So, but, but, so we actively started to fundraise. And by the top of this year, February, we had raised over eighty percent of the funding required to purchase the property. And we've been working to raise the remainder. Importantly, we have a really critical project deadline coming up. Measure M was a mellow roost, a mellow roost bond. It's a parcel tax. But the, the bonds will need to be sold to raise, immediately raise bond proceeds to be used for the acquisition of the, of the property. In order to, as I noted at the, as I noted, our option agreement, I know it on the slide, is a two-year option agreement. So it expires on June fourteenth of this year. At that time, we would exercise the option, pull all the funding into escrow and proceed with the transaction. In order to get the full extent of the funding into escrow, we need to sell those bonds. And it takes some time to do that. Marin County is working with us. They are actually the ones who would be taking this action. And we need to provide county staff by April, late, mid-April nineteenth, really, with evidence of full funding for the project so they can proceed with the bond sale. You can't put the Bond Genie back in the bottle. So you have to, they, the county has to have confidence that this transaction will proceed in order to take that step. And to do that, they'll need evidence of full funding from us by their board meeting of May seventh. We obviously want to give staff time to prepare for that board meeting, so we'll be meeting with them in later this month. Evidence of full funding is pledges, money raised, money in hand, and agendized items, state agencies. We have some pending agency grants. And so if there is a state agency agenda that indicates that there's a staff recommendation for funding, that would also constitute evidence of full funding. But this is really a make or break deadline. If we don't meet this deadline, if we don't sell these bonds and pull in the bulk of the funding, all of the other funding goes away. It's really contingent on our, this funding is contingent on our going forward with the transaction. And then just to note that we have under the option agreement sixty to ninety days to actually close on the transaction. So there is time to pool together funding once we exercise the option. Okay, next slide. So I just wanted to kind of give you an update as to where we are. And this is context for the funding requests that we're putting before you today. The, the bond, the county recently, just late in March, prepared a projection of the anticipated bond yield. This is based on the bonds going to market or in, in the May to June timeframe. So this is a very recent projection. And they anticipate about twenty point eight million dollars in bond proceeds. We've actually, they have agreed to, to, well, let me, let me back up. Under the purchase and sale agreement, the county will contribute funding to the acquisition. And that will include the bond proceeds and the second to, the second and third category of funding, which I'll explain in a moment. The county has actually agreed to, to, to fund the acquisition in the amount of twenty point eight million dollars. So if the bond proceeds, the actual proceeds are just a bit under, they'll cover the difference. If they're just a bit over, they'll shorten the length of the bond. So that has, there's an amendment to our, our purchase and sale agreement that is in place. In effect, guaranteeing that number. When Jerry and Tiburon passed mellow roost bonds in the nineties to purchase old St. Hillary's property adjacent to Martha, they had the foresight to add language into that, that bond measure that enabled any remaining proceeds to be used to purchase the Martha property should it ever become available. So this next category, existing proceeds that, that are available only for the purchase of Martha. And the current value of those proceeds with, with interest factored in is this two point three seven million dollar figure. At the time we got under option with the county of Marin, they pledged six million dollars in funding. Tiburon, very soon after, passage of Measure M pledged one million dollars in funding. And very recently, just last week, we've, we've been busy. They pledged an additional, up to an additional million. I, I should note though that that is, they will be the last funder in. And that is contingent upon our demonstrating need at the very end of, of this sort of funding process. They really have, they stepped up with the second pledge to ensure that we meet our April project deadline and can show evidence of funding. We've raised private philanthropic individual gifts of just over three, three point one million. And as well as a private foundation grant of one point five million. We have two pending state applications, one for five point five million, one for one point five million. The state grant process is a bit frustrating because it takes a long time. It's, it's easily a twelve to eighteen month more or more process. So we're waiting for final determination. Those like, that likely will occur after our April project deadline. But we do have confidence in at least five and a half million. One point five is currently, is, is currently uncertain. There is, there is uncertainty. And that brings us to the total that you see on the chart and this gap that we have. And, 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 you know, there's sort of the reason for our request today. There's, there's enough uncertainty and we do have a gap. And we do need to make this project deadline or else we lose this opportunity forever. And I think that's the conclusion of my portion of our presentation. I'd like to invite Jerry back up to say some concluding remarks. And then we'll be available to answer questions for you, of course.
Thank you, Erica. Yeah, the, just, I know it's sort of a fire hose of numbers. But I, the, the one thing that I wanted to highlight is that the county is guaranteeing the twenty point eight million, and that's a very significant piece. There's no drama between now and actual closing as to what interest rates are. So you don't have to follow CNN every ten minutes as I was for a number of months. The, the other is the, the private philanthropy has been very successful. And it's continues to be very successful. I'm literally receiving checks daily. So the fact that Tiburon put up a million back in November, or the fact that they are, have put up an additional million. People want to be a part of this project and donation, donations are still coming in. But we are short at this point. As you can see, we're at forty one point three four two, whatever. And so that's why we're here tonight to request what you can provide. And we happily support the, I guess, go to the next slide, last slide, which is the pledge request of one point two five, a hundred and twenty five thousand. And with that, we'll, questions, anything?
Thank you. Any questions for Jerry and Erica?
So this is the third time I think that we've had this presentation. But I just wanted to clarify my understanding on one thing, which is, as you said, the, the county is going to eat the difference on the bond issue. But as you said, if for some reason they overraise, then they're going to shorten the length of the bond. Are they also going to therefore cut some years off the parcel tax or are they going to take that themselves? They, so which is it?
Are they gonna, is?
The parcel, the parcel tax is for thirty years right now. So if they overraise on the bond and they therefore get to shorten the, the length of the bond, will they also shorten the number of years that they're collecting the parcel tax?
Yeah, it, it goes from thirty years to twenty nine years and
Or whatever it takes.
Whatever it takes.
Okay, perfect. That's on you. Thank you.
That was an important clarification from last time or from the Finance Committee presentation.
Can I ask, do those state grants that you're, you hoping come in for the five five? And you don't know exactly when that comes in, but will the county count those for your bond sales?
I'll, I'll let Erica address that.
Are they considering that so that you can move forward?
Yeah, it's definitely, it's, so it won't be considered, it's not connected to the bond sale. That's a separate source of funding, but it would be considered a source of funding. And again, the evidence that the, well, of course, if there were a grant award in place, we, we won't have a grant award in place prior to the May seventh board meeting. What we do anticipate having is a staff recommendation for the five point five million dollar grant award by May seventh. The, that actually will go to a board meeting, a state agency board meeting in late May. And so we wouldn't, you know, we'll have, we, we anticipate having that funding. The other state agency grant is, we just, we don't know at this time what the outcome will be. You know, ideally, we will get that additional state funding. One important note is when we looked at this ten years ago, we didn't anticipate any state funding. So the state really, really recognizes the important natural resource value and public access value of this property and is very supportive and very impressed by the community support and the community match as well. But we just won't know that by this critical project deadline. And that is, in some ways, Tiburon has helped mitigate that risk at this point. But we will need to provide them with an accounting for that second million, not for the first million, but for that second million. We need to provide them an accounting. It is, it is based on what happens with this state, second state agency grant.
Sorry, I have one additional question. I think, again, we mentioned this at the Finance Committee meeting, but I'd love to hear. I think one of the Finance Committee members suggested reaching out to Tiburon Fire Protection District. And they're not listed on your, and the Martha's property is in their district, as I understand. And so I was just curious to know whether they're on your list to get closer to this, closing the gap.
We're, so I have reached out to a board member to see if there are funds available. I don't have an answer yet, so I, I don't know. But we've reached out and the message is real simple. If there's open space, that's a lot less of a fire risk than forty three large houses. And so it's, it's in your interest, Fire Department. But I, I, it's an issue that needs to, they need to sort out if they have any leeway in how they use their funds. But they've been asked.
Yeah, we definitely anticipated that question this evening. One, you know, we're open to, of course, any suggestions, you know, and we'll continue to fundraise for additional sources of funding. It is important to note, another suggestion was made to us about some funding that's on a different grant style, cycle. And a lot of, I think it's important to note, a lot of funding sources don't necessarily provide acquisition, land acquisition funding. It's a very specific type of funding that we're asking for, from, from grants and grants, programs or agencies. And so in some cases, agencies just, it's not the type of funding that they provide. But will any, every, any recommendation, we absolutely look at very carefully and determine whether or not we're eligible for funding and whether or not the funding would be available in the time that we need it.
So for, just as an advertising opportunity for private donors, where should they go? Because I know you're running out of time here. Do you want to?
Well, we, so we've been, in the, the ARC has been a great source of information because our email addresses are there and our contact information is there. So we would ask people to refer any potential donors to us directly. And then we can, you know, speak to, to individuals about their funding intentions.
Do I, did I hear that you have a matching grant situation from the Belvedere Community Foundation?
Thank, yes, thank you. I'm very remiss in not bringing that up. We, besides the fire folks, we've also reached out to the two local foundations. Tiburon Peninsula Foundation, we reached out to, and they have given extent. I've already have the check literally in hand, well, not, you know, I've received the check. You know, it was a check that was quite significant for them. And we also reached out to Belvedere Community Foundation, where also a very substantial grant has been issued. And what, what they're, the grant is, is, as you've indicated, it's a matching grant up to fifty thousand. And we're hopeful that you folks will give a hundred and twenty five thousand, which makes the grant a match. But we're, we're reaching out to individuals also to make that match. the grant a match, but we're, we're reaching out to individuals also to make that match. So we're, we've received very strong support from both foundations.
Just a quick question. I have planning on my mind. I assume this is unincorporated Tiburon. Do you know if, or I don't know if Rebecca, you know this, is it, are there any housing element site inventory for this property? So do you know, do you know if, if any Tiburon or the county have allocated any, any housing for this site?
It, it is in the county and not in Tiburon. And very early on, we met with Supervisor Moulton Peters and asked if she had this property on any such a list. And I don't want to pretend to quote her, but basically the message was it's not on a list and it won't be on a list as long as you buy it.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Any other questions for the petitioner? Thank you both so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'll open up for further public comment. Please, Mr. Johnson?
Ken Johnson, again, from Leeward, actually came up for this project and I was listening to the other and I had to say something about it because I've been involved in it. But this is a huge opportunity. It's really an opportunity. They've been talking about all the benefits and everything. One was left out. If this doesn't happen, I think the traffic on Tiburon Boulevard is going to be substantially affected. But basically, this is, I can't think of a better opportunity. We talk about the eclipse, you know, being historical. Eclipse is going to happen again. This doesn't happen, it's not going to happen again. And, you know, I know the foundation, the vote of the people are really behind this. I really encourage you to find the 125,000 in the spectrum of things. I know this city's got these things and it's got that things and you have to weigh things. But this is, we're talking days and weeks to get this together. And this gentleman I've known since the 1990s and what he and his team have accomplished, no one thought it could happen. And I wanted to compliment you, Jerry. I had never met you, but the team is just amazing. So let's get behind it and let's do the right thing. Thank you.
Thanks, Ken.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is George Landau. I live in Tiburon, which sometimes raises questions here for the last 52 years. And I have been involved with Jerry and Erica for, since the beginning. And in fact, some of you may know me from this, from the various locations where I wore this sign. I was the kind of the, my full-time job for a couple of months. I would like to say that I'm one of the ongoing contributors to the matching funds and this is a very recent, so they, they answered your question, it's the Marin Community Foundation that people make checks to, but they list them for Tiburon Open Space. And so that's why that's us. Now, I'm here to basically tell you that we're this close, we're this close to getting this world-renowned site. And I was thinking, coming down here, that if you imagine a jigsaw puzzle composed of Yosemite, Muwes, Point Reyes, the Golden Gate Reserve, the last missing piece is right here, right here, 125,000, which completes this package that started out in, I looked it up, 1890, to get all of this together. And I don't know the exact number of people in Belvedere, but I calculated that's a one-time, a one-time additional fee of about $67 per person. And that, I think, is worth making a commitment, not just to this generation, because we've been at it for, for a generation, nearly two generations, 37 years, we've been working on these open space issues. But as the saying is, forever and a day with no maintenance, no maintenance, because the plan is, as with the Hammond property, to turn it over to the county and they do the maintenance. So it's really a one-time added investment on your part to get recognition in the world, in the world for, for this site. And it would be equivalent to anything out there, whether it's Bryce Canyon, Grand Canyon, Zion, or if you travel to see the pyramids or wherever. And it's right in our backyard. You see it every day. People see it from the air. When you take the ferry, you see it. It adds to peace of mind to anybody that looks at it for seconds or walks on it. And it's so important, so important. So I urge you, I really urge you to put up the 125,000 as, as your last pledge, because without that, it's, it's a jigsaw puzzle that's not complete and we cannot go to the county and say, well, we kind of lost this piece, but, but we'll find it somewhere else. We really need it to get the whole, all the other moving parts together and moving in the right direction. So I urge you, please.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Any other public comment here in the room? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
There are no hands raised.
Thank you. Close the public comment period and bring it back for discussion and deliberation. Anybody like to go first?
Well, I happen to use that property and walk it as often as possible, so I really appreciate everything you're doing to save it. There's a new fence up that doesn't allow me to walk with my friend to get to it, so it's a lot more precarious way that we have to go. And I'm really hoping that fence comes down soon. So I agree with you. I think this is a once in a lifetime chance to save a wonderful piece of property that we've all enjoyed, even if you don't walk there. As Mr. Landau said, it's wonderful to be able to look at it and imagine everything that's up there. That's so beautiful, especially this time of year with all the wildflowers starting to come out. So I would certainly support our making the donation and I hope people will consider making a personal grant to the matching funds from the generosity of the Belvedere Community Foundation.
Thank you.
I don't think I have much to add. I mean, I participated in the Finance Committee meeting and I think the, the full view there was we wish we had more money to give. We just are really constrained financially and so that was really, we had to give something up to come up with that 125,000. We had to defer some payments to the Fire District to be able to do that. But I think, as Jerry and Erica have pointed out, the tax measure itself was hugely supported in Belvedere and there's a lot of community support to, to support this project. And so I think as a one-time payment, it's absolutely the right thing to do and I'm sorry, we don't have more money to give than that.
Thank you.
I share the thoughts of my fellow council members. I want to thank Jerry Raisin for a lifetime of effort on this. I, I know that funds are really tight here in Belvedere right now, probably in ways you don't even realize, but we have a recommendation of our Finance Committee that somehow we can find this and I believe it is a generational opportunity. I enjoy the property very much and, and, and I, I agree with Mr. Landau that for our entire community, it provides peace of mind, however you use it. So my father-in-law namelessly said, the best things in life are the ones you thought you couldn't afford. And this might be one of them for Belvedere, but I fully support the project and I think the people of Belvedere support it too.
I can, I absolutely agree and can support the recommendation and I applaud your efforts to date and wish you good luck in completing the task and hope you can have, you've got some back pocket funds there to, to make sure it does come through. As a point of clarity, we're not approving a resolution, we're providing guidance and making the recommendation. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. There's, there's no, I should say, there's no resolution that's being adopted tonight. It's just direction of staff. And then we'll incorporate these funds into the city's, obviously, the coming fiscal budget.
Okay, so just, I'm sorry?
Yeah, just to clarify, there is no resolution, however you are making a recommendation to approve the donation tonight.
Why don't, so, so we'll make a motion to recommend it and vote on that as a recommendation to incorporate the 125 as, as, as reckoned by the Finance Committee into our budget and to make that, that contribution.
Correct.
Well, just a point of clarity, we've, we talked about Finance Committee about figuring out a way to make it a pro-rata or, or, or similar situations to run, but with their last money in, I don't see how we can do that. So, so I don't know that there's a mechanism for allowing that to happen.
Yeah, and I think the other point that was made in the Finance Committee is that because of how the Mallory's district is designed, we're paying one-third to their two-thirds this time around, whereas normally we're only a 20% contribution. So actually, in terms of the payments that we'll make over the next 30 years, residents of Belvedere are contributing a lot more than would normally be the case. So this is sort of small fry within that equation.
Okay. So why don't you continue with that motion, if you can?
Do you want me to restate it? I, I'm just saying, I make the motion that you stated.
Okay. So motion is made to make the recommendation to contribute the 125 and to find it in our budget as directed in the, in the, in the, in the staff report. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, thank you so much and, and good luck as, as, as you complete this transaction. Item 7B, discussion impossible action on revocable license for 32 Windward Road. I'll turn it over to our planning staff for a staff report.
Thank you, Mayor Mark and council members, for your consideration this evening as an application for a revocable license for the property at 32 Windward Road. In March 2023, the applicant received design review approval for a front yard, for front yard improvements, including a gate, brick walkway and landscaping. In August of 2023, the applicant received design review approvals to demolish a carport and construct a garage in the same location. As a condition of both approvals, a revocable license was required for these improvements. At the recommendation of staff, the applicant reduced the scope of work within the right of way. This reduced scope of work is before you this evening. The project proposes to install a new strip drain in the Windward Road right of way. The area of work is shown shaded in red. The surrounding asphalt would be replaced as necessary. Staff suggests that the project benefits the public as a strip drain will, will, will remove stormwater buildup from the city right of way. Staff suggests the findings for the revocable license can be made and recommends approval. I'm happy to answer any questions and the applicant is here as well.
Sammy, do you mind backing up one slide? That red line, it's approximate, right? It's, it's in the same plane as the curb, right? That looks proud of the curb, but, I mean, or this side of the curb, but I think it's in the, in the plan, we see in the document, it's, it's inside the curb itself or on the curb.
Yeah, my, my, my understanding in talking with the applicant was going to be just off the curb on
On the street.
On the street, yes.
That's not what the, the drawing shows.
That's correct, correct. This, this, I was talking to the applicant after the packets went out, so we can, if necessary, we can modify the, the revocable license to have it clearly show exactly the lines.
Are you able to go back to the drawing slide?
Yeah.
So that hashtagged area would actually move out into the street?
That, that's my understanding in talking to the applicant and he's here to clarify as well.
Okay. So we'll bring the applicant up to make a presentation and/or answer questions. Any further questions for our planning staff? Why don't I ask the applicant to present if they wish and to certainly clarify the location of that drain as it relates to this drawing and the picture with the red markings? Hi?
Hi, John Swain. The drain, we, the drain is, there's a puddle that, that accumulates right at the end of the street, just in front of the driveway, basically in the street, not in the driveway. In fact, I have a picture of the puddle if anyone wants to see it. Anyway, so we are putting a drain in for the new garage that's going to run down the side of the house. And it just made sense to us to incorporate a drain even in the street, which is the low point. I mean, if we put the drain up, if you'll notice on those pictures, the driveway does slope up. So if we were to put the drain up in front of the driveway, there'd still be a puddle there, which you would drive through every time, every time you went into the garage. So since we're putting the drain anyway, this is what we're thinking, that we can get rid of that puddle at the end of the street. That's the low point at that end of Windward.
Conceivably, if you're, if you're redoing, as Sammy suggested, the paving as needed, you could, you could re-engineer the low point.
Okay, sorry.
You could re-engineer the low point.
Yes, exactly.
But I'm saying you, you could re-engineer it inside the curb if, if you wanted to.
That was appropriate. We want to, we want to hit the low point.
Yeah, but my concern, and I don't know if, if Tony's taken a look at this, is, is from a, from a paving or slurry seal perspective, you've got now a six inch, eight inch drain sticking out into the road. That complicates and adds, adds complexity to an otherwise more straightforward slurry seal or street cleaning or repaving down the road.
Yeah, and I'll point out too that I didn't get a chance to talk with Tony about this, but there are other locations on Sanfordville Avenue where we do have similar strip drains like this. Generally, they're
Out in, out in the road.
Out in the road, yeah, beyond the curb and gutter area or in the curb and gutter area. They function the same way, I think, as what's proposed here, where they collect water at a low point and then pipe it somewhere else. That might be a question is where it's, where is it going to be piped to?
Yeah, where is it going, by the way? Where, where, where is the outlet of this drain?
Lagoon.
Can you do that?
Yeah.
Okay. Yeah. I guess, I guess, yeah, why wouldn't it? Yeah. Okay, thank you. Any more questions for the applicant? Thank you so much. And any additional public comment? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
I see none.
Thank you. Bring it back or close the public comment, bring it back for comments or deliberation. Anyone have any thoughts or questions or?
I think this application serves the purposes of the revocable license. I see substantial benefit to this. I see substantial benefit to the city and I'm prepared to approve this.
I agree.
Can we entertain a motion?
I move to that we approve the request for revocable license at thirty-two Windward Road.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you for your help. Thank you for your information. Congratulations. Item seven C, discussion of possible action on a revocable license for private improvements at ninety-five West Shore Road.
Okay, thank you again, Mayor Mark and council members.
I just need to state for the record that my residence is within five hundred feet of the subject property and I'm going to therefore accuse myself. Can I, can I run for the night? Excellent.
Can I just ask, Madam Clerk, how many people are online and Zoom? Okay, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you again, Mayor Mark and council members, for your consideration. This is an application for a revocable license at ninety-five West Shore Road. In August two thousand twenty-three, the applicant received Planning Commission approval for a residential remodel. The project required a revocable license for private improvements with, within the West Shore Road right-of-way. The scope of work included a new forty-two-inch tall trash enclosure and replacing or repairing existing improvements. At the recommendation of the Planning Commission, the applicant removed the trash enclosure from the scope of work and modified the landscape design so smaller grasses and shrubs were not encroached onto the city sidewalk. The revocable license area is showed, uh, shown shaded here in gray. On the right, the project would replace the existing wood planner with a new concrete planner and place a six-inch concrete curb. The project would replace the wood entry, garage door, and concrete driveway. And on the left side, the project would replace the existing gate, handrail, and retaining walls. Landscaping in the right-of-way would include bugan via to twenty feet tall, pitasporum to ten feet, blue sage, and acacia. Here, the site photographs show the existing conditions. The existing gate would be replaced with a wood door with bronze finishes. The wood planner boxes would be remodeled or replaced. The garage door and concrete driveway would be replaced. The wood entry would be replaced with EPA material. And the retaining walls would be replaced with new concrete retaining walls. Staff suggests that the project benefits the public as the new retaining walls will reinforce the city sidewalk. Additionally, the entryway and landscape improvements will improve the aesthetic appeal of West Shore Road. Staff suggests the findings for the revocable license can be made and recommends approval for the private improvements. Thank you. I'm happy to answer any questions and the applicant is here as well.
Thank you. My eyes aren't as good to see the, the heights of those retaining walls in the plan. Do you have the heights of those retaining walls?
They, uh, they would be four feet tall to match the existing.
But the existing aren't four feet tall? I don't think. They don't, they didn't look four feet tall. The, the stone, those are four feet tall?
No, those are not four feet tall. There's. I'm glad Phoebe's here too.
Okay, okay. We can, we, we, we'll, we'll ask her to come up in a second. But the, but the, but the retaining walls are intended to replace those two retaining walls.
That's, that's correct.
Any other further questions for our planners? So why don't we ask the applicant to present the extent that they wish to or specifically answer that question about the size of those retaining walls? Hi.
All right, nice to see you guys. I'm sorry, I didn't expect to be talking tonight. Yeah, the proposal is to basically replace everything that's there now with new, no higher. The, the existing, there's not a lot of support with those walls and they're really old. So we're just proposing to replace them with concrete.
Yeah, I just, I, as strong as my glasses are, I can't see that anymore.
Yeah, I hear you.
That's all the questions I have, if others might have questions. No, thanks, Phoebe, I appreciate it.
Okay, great, thank you guys.
I'll ask any other public comment on this item? Seeing none, Madam Clerk?
We have Jill Burnett.
Okay, thank you. Hi, Jill.
Hi, no, I was waiting for the open forum and you had asked, yeah, Sally left. So I have a comment for that, so I'll wait.
Okay, hang tight. Thank you.
There are no other hands raised.
So bringing back to the council, any further discussion or deliberation?
I should have asked this question of staff. Is there, I may have missed it. Is there, is there an existing revocable license on this property? And if not, can you give us a little history of that?
The, the records show that there was no revocable license for this property.
Have I read the plans correctly that, that, the, that the garage is in the public right-of-way?
You did, that's correct.
Thank you.
That, that small corner, right? On the left-hand side?
Appears to be across the, I just want clarification. We've seen this before.
That, that little corner, right?
It goes all the way.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, all across, yeah.
And the garage.
Yeah.
I just wanted to see if that's correct. Okay. And do we know when the house was built? So how long has this condition existed?
And I think these improvements have been there since the construction of the house.
Okay. The reason I ask the question aligns with other situations we've seen.
I'm comfortable making this, approve this revocable license if someone wants to make a motion.
I have, I have, I do want to make the motion. I have one comment and an apology. I believe you and I are going to look at this issue of revocable license and perhaps we got derailed by some housing issues. But perhaps the mayor and I could, could restart our efforts to just look at the issue of legacy licenses or legacy improvements in unlicensed areas. And, and maybe take another look at options available to the city where we confront requests for revocable license in existing improvements that would be very expensive to remove, but, and, and determine whether we need to make some other adjustments to our revocable license ordinance in the future, but not tonight. And so tonight, I'm prepared to make a motion to approve this revocable license at ninety-five West Shore Road.
Thank you. I'll second that.
Thank you. All in favor? Aye. Wonderful. Thank you for coming. That wraps up our other scheduled items. I'll now open the discussion, open, sorry, the meeting to the open forum and opportunity for citizens to briefly address the council on any matter that does not appear on this agenda. Do we have anyone in the room who would like to speak? Please.
My name is John Pollak. I live at two fifteen Golden Gate. I proposed a, an underdeck addition. I don't, did you get the three-page?
Did.
Okay.
We all, we all got your letter, thank you.
Waste your time at this hour with that. The particular section, which is okay, the first two parts needs a revision because right now it can accomplish, it can encompass essentially anything that's built there, no matter whether or not it has anything to do with drainage or slides or anything else. So I would just suggest to you that you get a change, amended, so that it doesn't pull in all these hillside households that want to make changes to, no matter how small. By the way, I want to thank the staff for working with me in essentially a difficult situation over a four-month period. There is cooperative, as cooperative as they could be under the circumstance of this code section.
Well, thank you so much. And, and Brian, I think has left, but I've already made a note to, to talk with him about your suggestions. Thank you so much. Anybody else here for the open forum? Seeing none, Madam Clerk? I guess Jill's probably first.
Yes, we have Jill.
Hi, Jill.
Hi, thanks. I'm calling in because I'm requesting that you require a construction bond for the, from Thompson Dorfman for the Mallory Point project. This bond is also known as a surety completion bond. And my concern is about Dorfman's ability to complete both the demolition project and the first phase of the construction. Because at one of our meetings, public meetings, Dorfman stated that they don't have the financing lined up. And then he said, in this financial environment, financing is an issue. And so I'm also concerned that his plan, or his plan or the city's plan to divide the projects into two permitting things, two permits, whether it's the demolition and then the construction of the apartment. If it doesn't happen, it could theoretically leave us with an open field if he's unable to secure the financing for the, the apartment, building, the apartment building. So that's what I'm requesting. If this is not the correct venue or meeting to discuss this, let me know and I'll bring it up at whatever you suggest. It's just not clear which meeting of the five it's permitted and I don't want to run out of time before it can be discussed and confirmed. And if this can't be required, I would like the residents of Belvedere to publicly know why not. That's it.
Thank you, Jill. We can't discuss it here because it's not agendized. But rest assured, we will address that in, in, in the future, the next future meeting relating to that project. Madam Clerk, anyone else with a hand raised?
Mayor Mark, I see no other hands raised.
Okay. Well, then I'll close the open forum and adjourn tonight's meeting and thank everyone for attending. And good night, thank you.